Council and redevelopment agency. And we're going to begin this evening, as we do each week, with the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and the staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by Art Schroeder.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice, and justice for all.
Before we proceed to our business, let me note that Councilmember Oscar Viegas is out of town on work business. We'll be back at the next meeting, but he's unable to be here this evening. All right, so we're going to, without objection, skip directly to item two, and we'll return to items one A, one B, and C following item two, which is the presentation of the 15 Days in October photo contest winners. I'd like to first start by turning over to Mr. Schroeder to give us a brief description and review of the contest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Art Schroeder, Public Information Officer for the city of West Sacramento. And you know, one of the popular events that takes place here every year is the annual photography contest. It started in 1999, when it was just 48 hours in the life of West Sacramento. And it then expanded to 10 days in May before settling in on 15 days in May, where it was for the, pretty much, the 10 years of the contest. But this year, the 11th year, we opened up a new season for the contest, moving from spring to fall. And we're happy to say that some 300 amateur photographers moved to October as well. Congratulations to West Sacramento for its response, and congratulations to the city council for your support. Tonight, we ask you to present the winners of the 15 Days in October photo contest. And for the winners in the categories of residence, non-residence, and shop in West Sac, the prizes were $500 first place, $250 second place, and $100 third place. And for the first time since 2000, we offered a category for city employees and retirees. And the prizes in that category were modified to $200 first place, $100 second place, and $50 third place. There was also a new category that we offered this year, shop in West Sac, in support of community efforts to shop local, think local. There was a lot of participation in the category. About 27% of all the entries were in the shop in West Sac category. Overall, the number of entries was 377, and not bad for the opening of a new season for this photo contest. Again, the basics were that the contestants could enter photographs that were taken here in West Sacramento between October 1st and October 15th. Then, an independent team of judges met to determine the top three in each category. The final judging panel was made up of the Sacramento Bee Photography Department, Sacramento Magazine, Tom Myers Photography, the Woodland Camera Club, the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce, Carwin Printing, and the city's own Commission on Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation. We also want to express appreciation for the support of our sponsors. That would be Carwin Printers, The Newsletter, and the West Sacramento Press. And special thanks to Dan Harris, Teresa Willock, Carol Richardson, and Kelsey Bozeman. At this time, we'd like the city council to finally reveal which prize the winners have won, first, second, or third place. They're all here tonight. All of our winners are here. So the results tonight, one more thing I'd like to point out is we're going to post these on the city's website, and they will also appear this December in City Lights. So we'd like to ask Councilmember Mark Johansson to come forward and begin the presentation of this year's 15 Days in October photo contest.
How's everybody doing? Good, good. Well, it's my pleasure tonight to present the winners of the non-resident category. Let's see, our third prize winner set aside time for photos on Columbus Day, October 13th. She visited Fire Station 45 off Lake Washington Boulevard, where she was getting a shot of a fire truck. Instead, she got this photo of a Station 45 helmet. Unfortunately, she says she broke one of the main rules of photo class she took at the learning exchange, no white borders. On the other hand, Amanda Van Fleet didn't do too bad in her first year entering the contest. Judges awarded her third place among non-residents. Congratulations to Amanda Van Fleet of Sacramento. You win $100. Please come to the podium. All right, now into second place. After having one repeat winner last year, six of the 18 winners this year have won before, including this year's second-place winner in the non-resident category. She works on Glide Avenue at Design with Fire. Here's her winner from last year, from fire to form glass. This year was the final day of the contest, October 15th. While dropping off her studio rent payment, Linnea Wong noticed melting sparks coming out of Perry Man Mechanical. She says it was like a scene from a space aliens movie. Grabbing her camera, Linnea took some 50 photos. The judges liked this one. Very nice. Winning the second year in a row, congratulations to Linnea Wong of Davis, the winner of $250. Please come up. Now for the first-place winner of the $500 category in the non-resident category. You might remember this prize-winning entry last year, when Ben Pacificar entered after the urging of his wife Gina. On October 14th, realizing his time was running out in the contest, he stopped near the Rose Orchard sign off North Harbor Boulevard before work. Afterwards, he stacked three images on top of one another. Ben created a great depth of field. Congratulations, Ben Pacificar. You win $500 in the 15 Days in October contest. And Mr. Pacificar works for Johnson &amp; Johnson, Farmisucchio, and Vacaville. And now to present the award for city employees is Bill Kristof.
Well, first of all, I want to, like Art did, I want to thank each and every one of you for all your submissions, and it's, I know that it's not the easiest thing in the world. I mean, I can't take a picture for memes, so whatever, wherever you came in, you did great, and thank you very much. Thank you for the city of West Sacramento, too, because we use your pictures sometimes. This year, the category of city employee or city retirees was set aside for staff and retirees of the city of West Sacramento. It is, it was a category that was offered for the first time in the year 2000. Three special prizes were $200, $100, and $50, and that's what the prizes will be today. The $50 third prize winner in, works in application support in the IT division. He spotted a ship named Global Dream anchored at the port of West Sacramento. He had to hustle out to the levee and get his shots before the sunset. I thought he showed the picture. Okay. Frank Piera, Frank Piera of the city of West Sacramento is the third prize winner in city employees category. Congratulations. Well, Frank's going back to his seat. Frank likes to take his kayak out to the port and ride his bike on the trails in West Sacramento. That's super. The second-place winner in the city employee category wins $100. In 2007, just before starting employment with the West Sacramento Police Department, Ruth Pegano was a photo contest winner in Residence 18 to 55 category. Two years later, Ruth is a crime scene investigator with the PD. Yeah. She assists detectives and officers in collecting evidence, providing testimony and documentation. And Ruth wins again in this photo contest, but this time as a city employee. Her photo, "Driving Education Into the Future," is of the PD School Resources Officer's vehicle. Congratulations to the police department's Ruth Pangano and second prize winner. Our first-place city employee winner is of $200. Chris Suraski works in the Facilities Development Division. He originally worked for the Parks Department, where he helped maintain Alice Norman Park. On a recent project, our winner was installing motion sensors at the port of West Sacramento through a grant from Homeland Security. It led to this view of the pier, a rare view captured for the contest. This pier, this view is underneath the pier. The judges awarded first place. Congratulations to Chris Suraski of City of West Sacramento. And with that, I'd like to invite Mayor Pro Tem Wes Pierce to the podium.
Well, good evening, everyone. One of the things I always find hard to believe is each year, the pictures top the previous year, which I've never believed we could do it. But there's a lot of great opportunities, obviously, for photos in this city and a lot of talented people to take those pictures. And I need to thank Art, Art works heart and soul on this project, and we really appreciate your efforts, Art. Okay, so now let's meet some more winners from West Sacramento, and we'll start with residents over the age of 55. Moving the contest to October this year provided some changes in the weather. Remember the storm of October 13th? Well, our third-place winner was inspired by that storm. I've learned, they never show us the pictures until we get up here. If you don't look quick, you don't even know. So in his backyard, fallen leaves provided this photo opportunity. Viktor Morozov took the photo, called it "Just After the Storm." Congratulations to Viktor Morozov of West Sacramento. You win $100. Okay, next, for our second-place winner. She says that she has the best job in the world taking care of her husband and grandson. The only thing missing, she says, is a paycheck. Well, we'll try to change that a little bit tonight. She also loves taking pictures, especially on nature walks. The photo contest was a chance to try taking pictures on one of those walks. Sally Shantzi says she entered the contest over the years, but has never won until tonight. She found her subject a ship named Global Dream anchored at the port of West Sacramento, and as did an earlier winner tonight, Frank Peraz. Congratulations to our second-place winner, Shalley Shantzi of West Sacramento.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Our first-place winner in the Residence Over 55 wins $500. He's lived in West Sacramento since 1991. In 2007, he was the third-place winner in the Residence Over 55 in a photo featuring his grandson, Tim, a photo titled "Bad Hair Day." On October 3rd, our winner was at the Neighbor's Fair, taking this colorful photo of the Sikh dancers. John Shantzi is back this year as our first prize winner in the Residence Over 55. Congratulations, John. You win $500. And yes, we just met his wife, Sally. Yeah, I think there'll be some discussion in the morning coffee over this. So this is the first time that we've had a husband-and-wife team as winners. Congratulations to both of you. Okay, in addition to Residence Over 55, we have a category set aside for residents under the age of 18. Our third-prize winner is a senior at River City High, taking advanced placement classes in government, English, and calculus. Good. Our winner is Kyril Avdezy. Boy, I probably butchered that. Plans to enroll at UC Davis next year and major in mathematics. He's been playing with photography the last two years and credits his brother Viktor in teaching him photography. Wow. The boy pictured is Kyril's photo is the son of his mother's cousin. The boy's name is Ashwin. Congratulations to Kyril. You win $100. So now, the $250 second prize winner, an eight and a half, at eight and a half, this boy is our youngest-ever winner in the photo contest back in 2007, taking this third prize photo of his sister. Last year, he was an honorable mention winner in the Mayor's Image of Health category. But he's outdone his previous photos this year, earning a second place. His name is Daniel Cozen. He just turned 11. Daniel says he learned to always keep a camera handy. His entry is an early morning photo of a family chicken, just after it jumped out of its cage and onto the fence. His mom Anna rescued the chicken. Congratulations to Daniel Cozen of West Sacramento. You win $250. By the way, Daniel's grandfather, Viktor, was one of the winners in the Residence Over 55, so this is a family affair here. Okay, now for the $500 winner in the Residence Under 18. Brenna Fallon is a senior at River City High with interest in art and photography. She also took the Biotech Teen Challenge through UC Davis, a project that led to the creation of a website on stem cell research. But it was fulfilling that the high school community service requirement that set her up as a volunteer at the Neighbor's Fair on October 3rd. Borrowing her stepfather's camera, she took this photo of the riverfront duck race. It's called the rainbow. Wow. Now Brenna hopes to buy her own camera. Well, she's got a good start on it tonight. Congratulations to Brenna Fallon, first prize winner for $500. Thanks again, everybody, and now we'll turn it over to our distinguished mayor, Cabaldin.
Well, good evening, everyone. We do this contest in part because we want to celebrate daily life in West Sacramento. We see so many of our iconic photographs in the newspaper, the ziggurat, the Tower Bridge, now of the Sturridge Tower, and those have all been the subject of photos that have won the contest in the past. But as you've seen, it's also an opportunity to look at the undiscovered parts of West Sacramento and to celebrate those. Some are grand, some are small, but they show really what the treasures that are throughout West Sacramento really are, and it gives us an opportunity to share and celebrate those with others and with other residents and employees in the community. So thank you for taking the time to participate. We, this is one of our favorite evenings. We get to see insights on parts of the community that we might not have seen. I've never seen the under the pier photo at the port, but it's a really special opportunity to celebrate the community. So our next category tonight is the Residence 18 to 55. It's one of the two most popular categories this year with nearly 100 entries. And the third-place photo is a collaboration. It's another family affair, collaboration between Deborah and John Kloss of West Sacramento. Deborah took the photo, and her husband, John, is the paid talent. He appears in the whimsical shot, which they've entitled "Drawbridge." Deborah works for the California Environmental Protection Agency, where she's an environmental scientist, and John is the editorial cartoonist, uh-oh, the editorial cartoonist for the News and Review. If you see him drawing me right now, please grab, please grab any of his supplies, as well as an art instructor at American River College. While driving to work, Deborah and John saw the Drawbridge sign off the Tower Bridge gateway, which gave them the inspiration for their photo entry. So congratulations, Deborah Kloss, the $100 winner in the Residence 18 to 55 category. Now the $250 second prize winner in the Residence 18 to 55 category. She's lived in West Sacramento for over 20 years, attending Elkhorn Elementary, Golden State Middle School, and River City High, where she studied art with Mr. Schumacher. Now Maricela Barrera attends Sacramento State University, where she's concentrating on oil painting and ethnic studies. She read about the photo contest in City Lights, and being her first time to entering the contest, Maricela was looking for something artistic. So in front of the CalSTRS building, she found her photo opportunity, the bike rack, on October 14th, one day before the contest deadline. So tonight, Maricela Barrera wins $250 in the Residence 18 to 55 category, second place. Congratulations. All right, now on to first place, and I'm told that we have detained Kanye West downstairs, so there will be no interruptions. But our winner is in the first place of Residence 18 to 55 category is the winner of $500. And like Maricela, the previous winner, our first-place winner majors in studio art at Sacramento State. Jennifer Benn hopes to find an occupation where she can use her artistic skills. She loves drawing, painting, and sculpture. Given her interest in sculpture, Jennifer was drawn to the city's new public art sculpture synergy at River Point Marketplace, which is the home to IKEA and Walmart and IHOP and, where did I get all my hamburgers? In-N-Out, okay. She took her photo of the sculpture at about 8 o'clock in the evening on October 5th, and her photo is called "This City, It's Reaching for the Stars." For Jennifer, public art has a positive effect on people. Buildings are okay, she says, but public art really makes a community feel real. So the judges selected her photo for first prize in the Residence 18 to 55 category. Congratulations, Jennifer Benn. You've won $500. Finally, in this year's contest, we had a special category promoting a timely theme, which is shop or dine in West Sac. This is part of our joint efforts with the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce, and I want to point out that their executive director, Denise Seals, is here in the back row. Their message of shop local, think local. The category was open to all contestants, whether they were residents or non-residents, whether they entered another category or not. Between October 1st and 15th, we asked you for photos depicting the shopping or dining experience in West Sacramento, and it came through. Shop or dine in West Sac attracted 99 entries. So let's check out the winners. The third-place winner took this photo of young people at Big Kahuna Frozen Yogurt in the Southport Town Center. Have you been to Big Kahuna? Happy kids, great refreshments. That's what we're talking about in the 15 Days in October contest. This photo was taken by Rachel Alvarez of West Sacramento. She's a daycare provider. She's been taking pictures for years, but this is her first time entering the contest. So Rachel Alvarez, who's also one of my Facebook friends, earns $100 as the third-place winner in shop in West Sac category. Congratulations. All right, the second-place winner in the shop in West Sac category wins $250. A political science major at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, our winner moved to Sacramento in 2006. He's a recycling specialist for the Department of Conservation, and using the Yelp website, Russell Edwards got some ideas for West Sacramento's shopping and dining spots. Whitey's Jolly Cone was a tempting prospect, but he found a Taste of India at Colsa Fabric Plus on West Capitol Avenue, and that's Russell's good friend in the photo, Rosa, checking out the merchandise. Russell remembers the friendly staff at Colsa who offered him free food. So this is both shopping and dining in West Sacramento, and let's congratulate Russell Edwards, the second prize winner in the category. And now the first-place winner of $500 in the shop or dine in West Sac category. Our winner lived in Placerville for 31 years before moving up to West Sacramento to be closer to her grandkids. She loves the city's photo contest, seeing all the people in the community taking pictures at the same time. And five years ago, Judy Vasquez took second place in the May photo contest in the Residence Over 55 category. She's back, but now she's first place in shop or dine in West Sac. The judges were impressed with this photo of Sal's Taco House up on C Street, capturing the distinctive mosaics and tiles at the front entrance. Dine in West Sac, right? So congratulations to Judy Vasquez of West Sacramento, the first prize winner of $500. Oh, I have it right here. I'm sorry. Asking for instructions that I already have. All right, so we've had a great time tonight, meeting and celebrating all of the photos and the winners, so we want to congratulate you again, and thanks for joining us tonight. We're going to be posting the winning photos outside of the council chambers, and we also have a refreshment area right outside. So let's take a short intermission to celebrate the winners, but we want to ask each of the winners to come forward and stay behind for a group photograph that won't be quite as compelling and exciting as these, but it'll be an important mento of tonight's award ceremony. So we'll ask the photo contest winners in the city council to come up for a group photo, and we have refreshments outside, and the council will take a 15-minute recess. Call the council back to order. We're going to proceed...let me know, first, the council did not meet in closed session this evening, so we're going to proceed to our general administration agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As a note on our agenda, we're prohibited by state law from taking action or having a significant discussion about any item brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for public forum on issues that are in our jurisdiction. We do ask that anyone speaking on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow request cards that's available at the door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to assure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public and to our vast television audience can involve some amount of anxiety, and so we ask that there not be any boos, or applause, or cat calls, or other demonstrations, and that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. And as always, we ask that if you have a cellphone or my notes say a pager—I don't know if anybody still has such a thing—that you please either turn them off or move them to the silent position. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that indicates which item on the agenda we are at. If it's not clear from the conversation, you can look up that and see where on the agenda the council is. Right, with that, we do have a couple of requests to speak under item 1A, and the first is by Mr. Bill Lowell. All right, he's not in the room, so we'll move to Juan Oguendo. Oh, it's you again, Juan. Welcome. There's a little...at the base of it, there's a little button.
Is that on?
Yeah. That sounds right.
All right. Hi, my name is Juan. I'm a student at River City High School and a member of the Sactron Heroes. I'm here to speak on behalf of my peers and talk about the city's annual neighborhood fair that takes place every year in October.
Juan, could I ask you to pull the microphone a little bit closer to you? We can hear you, but the television doesn't pick it up very well unless your mouth is pretty close to the microphone. Thanks.
All right. This year, the Sactron Heroes volunteered at the event. We wanted you to know our experience in going to read some of the statements from the peers that was there. The first statement is, "The Neighborhood Fair encourages people to be involved in their community and allows everyone to express their leadership skills." Another quote is, "It gave us a chance to help and do something about the community and gives us a sense of identity." The event helps inform people of what's available, things I want to be aware of. I remember when the parade came down the West Capitol Avenue. It provides ownership, is what motivates people at Neighborhood Fair. We can celebrate both. All of these things seem to be pieces of what builds communities, and we hope the city can continue to support this event for many years to come.
All right, thank you, Juan. Richard Navarro, it doesn't say which item, but is that item 1A that you must speak on? But that's not on our agenda, right?
No.
Then this would be the right time.
What is it?
Sacramento Gold? I assume he's going to tell us what that is.
Okay, this is more of an informational item that I wanted the city of West Sacramento and the city council to be aware of. As you all know, I'm a 53-year resident of West Sacramento. I've been here pretty much since kindergarten myself. I'm a liver transplant survivor, and I purchased a franchise for a semi-pro soccer team, a minor league club. And what I am doing is, I'm here to inform you that and to request some support from you people, not financial, so I'm not asking for any money. I'm actually here to partner with the city, but I wanted you guys to know what I'm planning to do here for the city and why I'm here to talk a little bit about it. But I've been in soccer for all my life, so this is part of my bucket list that I'm working on here. So, I actually went out, and I am the actual owner of the club. I purchased a franchise. It'll be a new franchise beginning play in Sacramento. I have the rights in Sacramento for 2010. We will be in the Western Division of the National Premier Soccer League. We will be playing teams from San Francisco, San Jose, Salinas, Sonoma, Santa Cruz, La Mirinda, and a team from Medford, Oregon, South Oregon. This is a national league with championships that take you back east and that...anyway, this is a men's team. I will be using local amateur players. The players do not get paid, but it is a top-notch, third-division, affiliated with Major League Soccer. All right, why I'm here is that I'm trying to get some support to use River City High School. That's why I'm here. So, I've been in the process, trying to get approval to use the field. I've been going through this since about April, and I've went through different entities. I've been to the school district, to the high school, back to the school district, to the city of West Sacramento. I haven't been told I cannot play. I just haven't been able to get some kind of memo of understanding with the city or with the entity that'll grant me the permission to play, and I'm getting near a deadline where I need to announce where this team is going to play. It's going to be in West Sacramento, which is really my only choice, but that's where I'm at right now. But what I wanted to point out for is that this is...I'm looking for a partnership. We're talking about benefits to the city of retention of business. This is a huge PR. We are going to be going and doing community outreach. My players will be from Sac State. I don't know if you guys are aware, Sac State made the NCAA tournament for the first time in history. We've got some great players. These kids, some of these kids will be on my team. We're going to reach out to the community. I'm partnered up with the Cal Expo to go out and teach kids how to read and to give them tickets to the state fair, and also with Kaiser. We're going to go to the schools and do free clinics. We're going to talk about wellness. Soccer is just the vehicle to get in there, but we want to partner with the schools, talk them about getting off the couches, exercise, drink water, do things like that. I'm also a member of the West Sac Chamber, so shop and local, West Sac, that's something that I think that we should work on, and we play in West Sac. I have sponsors that are close by. I have a major sponsor in West Sacramento that would love to sponsor my club. All right, so, I guess my time's up anyway, but I just wanted to say some of the advantages that we have here, and, you know, I've got the support of the Visitors Convention Bureau. I mean, I've got tremendous support in the area. So, what I'm here to do is to let you know that we're coming, hopefully, to West Sacramento, and I'd like to see maybe if someone could do a two-by-two with the school district and kind of firm this up for me, but I just wanted to let you guys know that I want to bring soccer to West Sacramento. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, so that's our request on item 1A, and I just would ask the city manager if you can give the council...I'm assuming the Director of Parks and Recreation is aware of the concept and the proposal, that the council get an update as well. Oh, Maricela Lowell's back in the room. All right.
He was giving me that stink eye.
Oh, yes, I called you first, Mr. Lowell, since your card was in first.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. I didn't think my 15 minutes was up yet. Anyway, William Lowell for the record, and even though we've gone most of the way, I'm still concerned about...we've got 25-mile speed limit signs where we've got the most curvy roads and whatnot, and it seems to me like that should be 15 miles an hour because some of those roadways out in front between Jefferson and Merkley and so forth are pretty narrow, and I still say we should update that sign on West Capitol, westbound, right there at Fourth Street that says, "Use 275," because of that low underpass, and of course, 275, the only thing that's left of that is the Tower Bridge. So, again, that should be updated, but I'll mention once again that my barriers to shopping locally are the places I like to eat aren't here, and they don't have places to buy big guys' clothing, but I did have a rather lengthy conversation with a lady in the marketing department at Walmart this last week, and so she's going to have some of her coworkers research it because I emphasized that if you have, say, a big member of the family that can't find clothing anywhere else, and they have it, why chances are, the whole family or group is going to come there and shop there first, and you tell me that the rest of the people aren't going to shop there while they're letting the big guys or the big gal shop there? In fact, over here in West Sac, they've got the...a worker told me they had sizes to a 6XL in the women's clothing, but just a few of the 3XLs, and those get sold so fast. So, I'm asking them to get real serious and take aim at the market and so forth, so I think we're going to see some good results from that. It may take a little while, but like I say, satisfy that little appetite for the right people and also give us the right stuff, and we'll shop here in West Sacramento more. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, those are our requests to speak on item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, a couple of things. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation met on November 12th. The news there is that the vacancies are improving. We're now at 96% occupancy. A lot of that's a result of more aggressive advertising, including some Twitter work that we're doing on a couple of the complexes, going really well. We're now in the process of getting a new executive director. Charlie Lerner's contract expired and it wasn't extended. We're going through the process right now on that. And then, the Homeless and Poverty Action Coalition met today on, I believe it's December 16th. Coming to council will be the draft...actually, it would be the 10-year homeless plan that the coalition's been working on over the last...it's been about a year. And just, I know there's some concern about what the plan would be in terms of housing, but housing is not in the plan. Basically, what we're trying to do, what the coalition is trying to do, is preventative and looking at the underlying causes of homelessness, including a work with this federal grant to look at interdiction before people are evicted from their homes to go in and provide assistance, either legal assistance, job searching assistance, whatever. Basically, ideas to keep people in their homes, not let them become homeless in the first place. That's the federal grant we're working on, but the actual homeless plan, which will have basically looks at coordinating resources in a more efficient manner and looking at the root cause of homelessness here and addressing that, and that would be, for example, transportation issues, look at some of the dependency issues. So, it's more efficient use of the social services, which I think is 180 degrees from what Sacramento's doing, which it seems to me is relying more on housing, which tends to be more of a symptom. But tomorrow, there's...West Sacramento's hosting the Homeless Roundtable at the Bridgewater Lakes Boathouse. That's tomorrow at 9:00. So, what the process is with the plan is it will come to council probably on December 16th, and what they'll be looking for is an endorsement of the plan, and they're going to each of the cities, to do each of the participating cities. So, what I've instructed Louise Collis, who's been very good on this project, is to make sure council has a copy of the plan before the meeting to take a look at it. It's really not that long. It's really, I think, a pretty succinct set of steps and goals with measurements on addressing the homeless issue over the next 10 years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johansson. Mr. Kristof?
Yes, on Thursday, November 12th, the flood protection agency, our JPA, met, and a couple of the issues that were discussed was, number one, Enterprise is done, so people shouldn't see too many more trucks going on the south side of Enterprise. They've got that all fixed and patched up. And the state, in meetings with the state that we've had, the city had upfronted some costs for various levy reaches and things like that, and we should be receiving a check about...from about $1.5 million before Christmas, so I thought that was pretty good news.
Great. On a couple, the Board of Directors for the Yolo County Transportation District met on Monday. Mostly routine business. We are experiencing some problems with the contractor that actually operates the service. The district is a contractor, but we have a...VIA Transportation actually operates the bus system. We are experiencing some minor issues, but we're concerned about their potential long-term impact if they continue or they get bigger. So, we had a heart-to-heart with the contractor on Monday night, and we're going to continue to aggressively monitor them. The main item of business at the district board was the possibility of the district ranking, evaluating and ranking the various projects that have been proposed by Yolo County jurisdictions in the SACOG funding rounds. So, the council's aware, SACOG has three regional funding programs for which rankings are underway, the Community Design Program, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Program, and the Regional Local Program. And I think there were 14 applications from the various jurisdictions in Yolo County, the county, the four cities, and UC Davis for that project, for those funds. And so, the issue before the district board was whether, as we do with STIP funds, the more discretionary funds, whether we ought to evaluate and rank them one against another and send our recommendations off to SACOG. There was some interest in a couple jurisdictions in doing that. We ultimately decided that that was not a good idea. One, because a couple of us are already on the SACOG board, so we don't need to go through that exercise twice, but more importantly, that we've done better regionally in Yolo County when we've allowed that process. in Yolo County when we've allowed that process, the regional process, to work based on the merits of the projects. So, there is a Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee that goes through and has criteria, and they rank the projects based against those criteria. And so, if we shifted to a system where each of the counties and the jurisdictions in them started to make it just about, we want this, you know, as a parochial or political matter, that that, if you wind the tape back, that would not have been good for Yolo County. Now, Woodland pointed out that when I said Yolo County, that really meant it wouldn't have been good for West Sacramento because we have been by far the biggest beneficiary of those funds, because we have competed well in them. But ultimately, everyone agreed at the board that it didn't make sense for the board to do that. That's good because the next day, the rankings, the rankings from those committees, evaluative committees came out, and Yolo County did do quite well. There's $80 million in that pot, a good chunk of which has to be reserved for Sacramento County because they, it's technical, but in the last round of funding, they had projects funded which they couldn't deliver, and so we essentially deferred there. And we took some of that money back late in the game, moved it to other jurisdictions, including us, and told them that they would get some, they'd get first call in the next round. So, out of that $80 million, $25 million or $24 million is recommended to go to Sacramento, the county of Sacramento for their projects. But the total for all of Yolo County is recommended is just shy of $15 million, which is a very large proportion of the remainder. And, you know, that after Sacramento County, the next three jurisdictions throughout the region in terms of their recommended, their recommended allocations were Yolo County itself, just over $6 million for the bicycle connector between Davis and Woodland, which has been a big priority for those two cities, but for the county as a whole for a while, then Rancho Cordova, and then third is us. And we had two projects in competition. The first was in the community design category, and this is, I think, now a nine- or 10-year-old program, community design. It's about $15 million a year. The largest project ever funded out of the community design program is the West Capitol Streetscape Project. The second-largest project funded out of the, this fund is going to be the Tower Bridge Gateway East Project, so connecting the work that we've already done on Tower Bridge Gateway all the way to the Tower Bridge and the third and fifth street intersections. The third-largest project in the history of this program is Tower Bridge Gateway West, the original program. So, West Sacramento's done very, very well. I think we've competed for nearly a third of all the money ever appropriated for this program. So, that was, that's a big deal. And that, that $4.2 million for that project represents about just over a third of all the community design money for this round. So, that's a, that's a very good outcome in that regard. In the Bicycle and Pedestrian Program, we're recommended for $575,000 for the, the yellow short line rails-to-trail program for the, and the bicycle bridge across the barge canal. So, it's an important backbone connector, both for commuting, but also for students to access the high school and for recreational use as well. So, that's a, it's a big deal. It's one of our, I think, our largest allocation in the bike ped program ever. So, it's a good set of allocations from both a local and a county-wide perspective, and I think it was the right call at YCTD not to make this about jurisdictions. Now, having said all of that, I mentioned the county of Sacramento was allocated $24 million. The city of Sacramento's allocation across all these programs together, remembering that ours was just about $5 million. Theirs is $2.3 million. So, I expect there's going to be some, we've never had this before. There's never been in any jurisdiction that's come to the SAICOG board and said, notwithstanding the merit-based process that's been gone through, you know, we want to, we want to change it. I would not be surprised if there's a move at the SAICOG board to try to get some additional Sacramento City projects funded. So, that's the only potential challenge. But I think otherwise, it's, it reflects well on our projects and certainly reflects well on the staff work that's been done to make our projects as competitive on all of the scoring and the points and the rankings that are necessary to be able to deliver them. So, all the work that's happening on the West Capitol on Tower Bridge Gateway is really only possible because of these funds, and we're talking about nearly $15 million of regional investments and making that work. It's the region's commitment to back up the blueprint, right? We said, we will grow more than most other folks, and in exchange, we're going to need more of the money. And this, these rankings reflect that that commitment's being honored. So, the, this is going to go to the SAICOG Transportation Committee, which I happen to vice-chair at the beginning of next month, and then the SAICOG Board in the third week of December for their, for their allocations. The, I will not be at the December 2nd meeting of the council because the U.S. Conference of Mayors is holding a summit, mayor's summit on water, and I'm going to be, I need to be there for the city because we're going to be taking, we're going to be meeting with the White House on the draft executive order that would essentially end federal investment in 500-year floodplains, which is a bit of a problem for those of us. And 100-year floodplains, but it's a problem for the entire region. It's a problem for most cities across the country. So, as I've indicated before, the mayor of Dallas and I are chairing a subcommittee on that issue, so I won't be here for that, for that. But I think we're hopeful that we'll be able to make some progress in that regard. Even if they change it from 500 years to 100 years, there's still a lot of other problems in the executive order because the original executive order had a lot of, not loopholes, but it was a lot more flexible with respect to how it was going to be implemented, and this one is not. So, it's a, it's a big deal. But fortunately, the mayors of the country are focused on it in a positive way. Then lastly, yesterday, the Mayor Johnson in Sacramento hosted a, an annual breakfast meeting of the region's mayors, and talked about a lot of topics. The major ones were, I brought up the floodplain executive order. We have broad support. I think we're going to get a regional letter from all the mayors on that issue, but also had a long conversation about ending homelessness in the region and about our respective strategies and how we might work more closely together and linking up the plans between, you know, such as Mr. Johansson described with what the city of Sacramento and others are doing, and also Mayor Johnson's initiative around volunteerism and encouraging cities throughout the region to join a national effort called Cities in Service, which I'll provide the background on that to the council that we can consider at a future meeting. All right, I don't want to see his appointments to boards and committees. We have none of those this evening, but we will in December. Item, we've disposed of item two. That brings us to our consent agenda, which is items three through six. Are there any items on consent that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for a separate question or comment?
I have a question on three.
All right, then item three is consideration of amendment number one to the development reimbursement agreement between the city of West Sacramento and Kehovenini and Forecast Homes Incorporated for the Rivermont subdivision. Mr. Kristof?
Hi. I guess, just to get an understanding of this, these are improvements that Kevorkian had made for a different subdivision, so that Marshall Crossing could come in.
Correct.
And now, Marshall Crossing will be paying us back if we up-front the costs?
Marshall Crossing will be paying drainage impact fees, which will cover the cost of their fair share of contribution to that improvement. And we won't reimburse Kehov until we collect that money from Marshall Crossing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, the consent agenda's been moved by Mayor Burden, and seconded by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed. Hearing none, that motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. We'll now proceed to our time-set agenda, item seven, which is a public hearing regarding Resolution 09-48, providing for amendments to the Bridge District Triangle-Specific Plan, Ordinance 09-12, providing for corresponding amendments to Plan Development Number 41, Ordinance 09-13, Rezoning 1501, and 2081 South River Road from Waterfront to Waterfront Plan Development Number 41, and Resolution 09-84, adopting sequafinding as a fact in Statement of Ode to Writing Considerations and Improving the Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Plan. Ms. Hamilton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I just have a couple opening remarks. Let me move this up a bit. I just wanted to begin by acknowledging all the efforts by both city staff and the property owners to this, to reach this point. It truly has been a monumental effort and all hands on deck for many months. And so, I just wanted to acknowledge all that have been involved. Moving on, you do have a memo before you from myself and Katie Jacobson through the city manager. Attached to that memo, it contains a new Redline version of Volume One. That is something we've been working on since the prior version went out to you. It primarily contains clarifications of terms that we've been working on with the property owners. It does move the entire Development Regulations section, which is 2.2.3, into more appropriate sections of Volume Two and Volume Three, as well as delete some of the duplicative text in there that's contained in other documents, such as the supplemental EIR, the municipal code, et cetera. Also, in the Redlines, a portion of Section 2.1, which is the organization section of the plan, was moved forward within the volume to Section 1.3, which is the institutional context and goals. That move was done in order to provide, or so that that text could precede the discussion on the goals, responsibilities, policies, and guidelines in order to provide better clarity on the definitions of those terms and how they might be applied. And so, if council has any further questions on that as we get into the presentation, we can go into more detail on those. Staff does have a presentation tonight on the proposed amendments. It's more of an overview of the volumes, based on the changes that have occurred since you last saw the plan earlier this spring. David Tilly, senior planner, is going to present on Volumes One and Two. Katie Jacobson, senior redevelopment program manager, will present on Volume Three. We also have several other Bridge District team members that are present tonight and are available if there are detailed questions, such as Mark Collier, Shanna Zespin, and Dave Spock. There are two policies of note that we highlighted when we sent out the volumes to you about a week ago, that we will be seeking direction on from council. Those are the development of architectural design guidelines and the maximum building height restrictions, also including stepped setback requirements. That concludes my opening remarks, and I'd like to turn it over to staff unless council has questions for me.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As Charlene mentioned, we are here tonight in public hearing format on the proposed amendments to the Bridge District Specific Plan, and I'd like to give you an overview of the first two volumes before Katie will go over Volume Three for you. For the, as the council recall, and for the benefit of the, benefit of the audience, the Bridge District is the area generally surrounding Rayleigh Field between the US-50 Pioneer Bridge and Tower Bridge Gateway, and the Tower Bridge itself, which is in the foreground of this picture. This is aerial we wanted to show because the part, one of the changes that we have made is we've actually expanded the boundary of the district slightly to bring in the SEMEX properties, which are located just on the south side of the Pioneer Pioneer Bridge. The specific plan that we have in front of you tonight is comprised of three volumes, and we do discuss them in terms of independent volumes, but the three of them combined do comprise the plan. And this format is generally follows the same format of the existing specific plan in terms of having policy-level information upfront, design regulations following that, and then specific details of implementation as the final portion of the chapter. And so, we always want to consider that it is one plan, although we do, it is comprised of three volumes. Just, it's just a quick refresher, some of the neighborhood changes have been made since the original plan has been adopted. Over the years, there's been some incremental changes, and we've tried to capture all of that in addition to the things we have come up with over the last year or so, working with the property owners. The waterfront neighborhood, of course, has needed adjustments as the levy setback has increased over time, and as I mentioned previously, we're picking up the SEMEX parcel to the south. Council removed the park blocks under separate action a few years back, so we've captured that. And other, that change has brought about other changes in the adjacent neighborhoods, such as the Core and Pioneer neighborhoods, which have absorbed some of that land that had previously been in the park blocks neighborhood. So, we will now have four, in four separate neighborhoods within the district. Volume One really is the vision document. It describes, you know, policies and responsibilities and for the overall vision of the, of the district and its ultimate build-out. Since we have been here and since we've been to the planning commission, we've attempted to refine the policies and responsibilities, both on a district level and also by neighborhood. And we've clarified the procedures that have longstanding been in the document, such as for right-of-way dedications and the entitlement program for the entire district. The Volume Two of the specific plan principally focuses on streetscape design standards. Within that document, there are street cross-sections, just the street furniture and street landscaping, at which streets will allow vehicular access and which ones will not, where service entrances to buildings are supposed to go, and also introduces an important concept, building frontage types, where depending on which neighborhood you're in or which street you're on, different buildings, there's a menu of about six different building frontages that could possibly be, can be considered within the district, and then depending on where you are, a subset of those overall types would be allowable in that area. This document also introduces a street hierarchy. This exhibit here describes the hierarchy in terms of the primary and secondary streets. It also is important. It shows principally along the riverfront, which parallels the river that where retail is required, and also addresses along the New Grand Street, formerly known as Garden, where we're interested in concept of retail convertibility, whereas ground floors of buildings would have to be built to accommodate ultimate retail use, but wouldn't necessarily have to be populated by retail users at the, at the inception. It's contrasted by the area where retail is required in and around the plaza and along riverfront, where those would need to be populated by retail as, as they are built. This exhibit also shows the universal streets that would be used to break up some of the larger blocks within the core, and also describes the access corridors that are really the east-west extensions of these, of those streets that will lead public access to the riverfront and to the promenade and plaza. And just following that, that hierarchy quickly, the regulating plan contained within this document identifies each street and provides specific criteria for the principal streets and streets of civic importance, such as Grand and Ballpark Drive, and it works its way down in hierarchy all the way down to the internal universal streets within the, where proposed within the Core neighborhood. And this is just one example of some of the aspects that are new concepts that we've, or ones we have refined. So, in each, each district, in each street, there's these different zones within the sidewalk from, you know, curb edge to building face and varying dimensions, depending on what street you're on, and varying planting pallets and formats. But this is the, an evidence of how we visualize many of the streets arriving. And if, if we have done all this to the, all of our, to the best of our abilities, we are hoping that this rendering would be something along the place that we would, the plan would ultimately produce. As Charlene mentioned in her presentation, there are two, two principal areas we're seeking your direction on. There are somewhat interrelated in that the plan for longstanding since the original adoption has had maximum building heights and stepbacks, and the maximum building heights are variable within the district. They're not uniform. And within your current plan of Volume One, there's a building heights map. Essentially, it had a mix of building heights. The tallest buildings were generally in the Core District, and the buildings along the riverfront, you know, were, were in the neighborhood of only 150 feet height max as compared to 250 feet height in the Core neighborhood, which, as we read the plan, is really intended to bring some value of the riverfront toward the more landward part of the district. And this has been a part of the plan since its initial inception. And then architectural guidelines. The plan originally took a stab at design guidelines, but really did not have a level of specificity that, you know, we believe is important now and going into, into the future. Both of these aspects are areas that the property owners have expressed opposition to having, and so, tonight, we are seeking your guidance on these particular, two specific topics. And so, with that, I'd like to hand things over to Katie Jacobson, who will discuss Volume Three.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Good evening, Mayor, council members. As council's heard, a very detailed Volume Three presentation in March- As council's heard, a very detailed volume three presentation in March, and held multiple workshops on volume three, I'm going to do a brief overview of it tonight for you. In 2007, the city and property owners began a collaborative process and formed a task force to update the implementation element of this specific plan. The focus of the effort was to develop the financing and engineering detail at a ready-to-construct level, to provide transparency and clarity about the rules of development, and to analyze changes in the city's regulatory climate and environment that would support the urban-scale, dense, transit-oriented development that was envisioned in the plan. One of the most important achievements of the task force has been a significant advancement of the plan vision, I think that you'll see in volume two and three, is that volumes two and three clearly recognize and reinforce the linkage between transportation, investment, and development, and land use. Transportation, they both recognize that transportation investment shapes and encourages sustainable communities that are safer and more livable. Volume two reinforces this linkage through the design of the roadways and the zoning that regulates the relationship of the buildings to the street. Volume three defines the necessary improvements and provides a financing structure to ensure that critical transportation elements needed to support the densities and scale of development are built. Volume three also includes a separate appendices, which is a standalone document. This appendices contains the supporting detail and documentation of the assumptions and policies that are summarized in the volume three chapters. It also contains general reference materials to also support the content of volume three. These are, consist of information about citywide ordinances and master plans. Again, these, the appendices to volume three are not intended to be standalone policies or regulations, but are supporting documentation for the policies contained in volume three. Development of the strategy was overseen by Steering Committee of City Leadership, including department directors and the city manager. The document content was a product of the working task force, again, which was the property owners and city staff. They were supported by urban economics and engineering consultants, and the, each section of volume three has been authored by the city staff member that's responsible for that, that is the city's subject matter expert in that area. To begin the implementation strategy process, the task force first revised the neighborhood boundaries consistent with David's presentation. We defined the ultimate buildable areas by setting the roadways, the parks, the flood easement, and other non-buildable areas. The property owners developed both an anticipated or expected build-out program and maximum build-out scenario, and the task force also designed a density bank mechanism that will be managed by the city to support more dense development projects. The task force also, in terms of a financing strategy, developed a tiered financing strategy with two basic categories. Backbone infrastructure is that infrastructure, is that set of infrastructure and amenities that are, that is needed to support the expected build-out of 9.6 million. Supplemental improvements are those improvements identified within the specific plan, which are necessary to achieve the specific plan vision, but development is not dependent on them, and supplemental improvements can be financed with more speculative sources like tax increment and grants. And finally, we, the task force defined the first phase of construction, which is the five-year CIP, referred to as the 2014 Plan, based on Prop 1C grant, Prop 50 grant, and other approved city projects. The mixed actions on the implementation strategy, volume three, staff is expecting to return to council after the CFD is formed. The CFD is still being structured, and staff will need to return and amend the financing section of volume three with updated financing tables once that CFD is formed. Also, the lead neighborhood development standards are still under development. We will also plan on returning to council and amending those into the document. Additionally, I wanted to highlight that the staff recommendations tonight include a delegated authority for the city manager to regularly update the appendices to volume three, provided that there's no substantive or policy changes associated with that update. Volume three clearly defines that council is approving the circulation plan as one integrated system, that the elements are interdependent, and although the improvements will be constructed at different phases and cycles of development, they exist as a whole in the district and cannot be uncoupled. The transportation system elements consist of the roadways, which are sized to support 12 and a half million build-out capacity, which is the maximum build-out scenario. They include private access streets, which are, these streets provide smaller, more walkable block sizes. They increase, increase the number of, maximize the number of routes from one destination in the district to another. They increase multimodal access to the river, and they accommodate private uses. Also, the streetcar, the first phase and immediate extension for the streetcar is included within the volume three. Transit is, however, expressed in volume three as a level of service requirement that is financed as a component of the backbone. However, streetcar is the desire and priority of volume three. Transit is also supported in the financing by investment in placemaking in the plaza, focused retail requirements, and pedestrian amenities. The bikeways element of the plan. Key urban standards in the, in the transportation and circulation chapters of volume three are that there were reduced vehicle trips projected based on the urban scale of development, the pedestrian-friendly design. Roadways were, again, sized to the maximum buildup of 12 and a half. Streetcar transit and structured parking are part of the financing scope. We were able to evolve narrower rides away as a result of assuming urban levels of service, and there's higher frontage costs on our roadways. Although we were able to reduce the roadway size, the frontage, due to the pedestrian orientation of the circulation, frontage costs are higher. For water, sewer drainage and joint trench, key concepts in the plan are a green, very green stormwater drainage solution has been designed, which includes onsite requirements for the private development. We assumed urban household sizes in the homes and urban water usage consumption standards. Our underground utilities are sized, again, to the maximum build-out. The water tank will be constructed in the first phase, sized to support 8.9 million of build-out, and the pump stations, again, are sized to support the expected build-out. Volume three sets forth an urban parks program, which you see before you. Key urban concepts in the park plan is that there's obviously less land being dedicated. However, the neighborhood parks are designed with a very intensive urban style of amenities. Also, another urban concept that's been integrated into our parks plan is distributed recreational elements. Those elements are very urban because they recognize that there is a scarcity of land and that in order to achieve our financing goals, we need to maximize the developable area. So distributed elements allow for recreational elements to occur on private development through public easement process and other fee mechanisms, and at this point, it's intended that that process is implemented through our architectural guidelines that will be developed. Also, the core park will probably be developed in a later phase. In terms of the plaza and promenade, key concepts are that the plaza itself, an interim riverfront walkway, and full development of a phase of the promenade, referred to as Phase 5A, are defined as backbone improvements. There's a private-public integration of the plaza. Those details are set forth in volume three. Supplemental improvements include the ultimate promenade improvements, a floating pier, and financing for the backbone is from the CFD, Prop 50, and tax increment. District development is being jump-started by a $23.1 million state Proposition 1C urban infill incentive grant. This, this grant investment, state investment, is being combined with other committed private financing sources to build the first phase of backbone infrastructure in the district. This grant also includes a commitment of seven to, for the city and property owners to build 731 affordable and market-rate homes. The homes right now are planned to be built around Garden Park, a section of them on the riverfront. A project called the Bridge Project, which I think has been before your council, is going to be built at the intersection of Fifth and the Off-Ramp, and Delta Lane Project along Tower Bridge Gateway. Next steps in the volume three process are implementation of urban standards beyond what has been accomplished through volume three. There's still council consideration of general plan amendments for urban service levels, residential density. We also are, need further council consideration of urban area standards for light, noise, tree mitigation, and urban park policies, as has been documented in volume three. We need to further implement the density entitlement bank program, develop and adopt design guidelines for Tower Bridge Gateway, and develop transportation demand management plans. The next steps with the property owners or the city is to complete negotiation and development of the development agreements, to form the CFD. That's essential to financing the first phase 2014 plan. To complete architectural guidelines, again, develop an appendix for the lead neighborhood development designation, to complete our right-of-way and park dedications, relinquishments, and acquisition. We need to implement our comprehensive parking ordinances and fees, adopt a streetcar financing plan, and also form a CFD for operations and maintenance in the district. And that concludes my presentation on volume three, and we're open for questions.
And does that conclude the whole staff presentation?
Yep.
Are there questions for staff at this time? Mr. Joe Henderson.
Yeah, probably David or Katie. What is the status of the development agreement?
We've been in meetings and negotiations. We completed an ideal term sheet several months ago. We've been very focused on completing specific plan amendments because they're integral to the development agreement. The development agreement incorporates them, and we expect, our hope is to have the development agreement wrapped up in the December timeframe.
Can we do it by the next meeting?
I think that might be a little aggressive, but we'll certainly put the top priority on, that is going to be 100% of, I think, staff time will be, that is, supporting the Bridge District will be focused on completing the development agreements.
Okay, and the height, what is the maximum height then along the river under the plan right now?
The base, the base is 150, and in some, in some areas where residential is shown by the plan to be required, that allows to go as high as 250.
Okay. How tall is the Sturs Building?
Sturs Building...
280, something like that.
Yeah, that's approximately.
So we couldn't put the Sturs Building in that district, something similar to that, or Fairfield for that matter?
Those, they certainly could go in the core neighborhood, and some of the, and near the Pioneer Bridge, there's some allowable heights there, but at least on the current plan, something like that would not fit exactly on the, in the waterfront.
What would be the rationale for that?
I'm sorry, I have to...
What would be the rationale for that, for limiting heights along the river?
Well, the original plan tenant was, you know, kept, kept the tallest buildings in the core neighborhood, and so that the buildings along the waterfront did not unduly obstruct, you know, the rest though, the more landward portions of the district from the waterfront. It gave the core neighborhood the opportunity, at least, to build taller, so that would, you know, at least be able to look over buildings along the waterfront area.
Well, I mean practically, if you have a 150-foot building along the river and you have a 300-foot building back, you're not going to see the river anyway. What's the view that you're protecting with that scenario?
Well, it's, it's the opportunity so that even if it's not the river, it's downtown, it's the Tower Bridge. It's, that was, that was really the original intent of the plan, and, you know, this is something, this is something we've, we desire to maintain, you know, at least so we can, till we can get in the context of having architectural guidelines, which is really where the, you know, building heights and other issues really should, ultimately should reside. And so we anticipated, even at this point in time, we are recommending that we maintain the building heights as they are. We would expect to readdress those once we, once we have a more formal set of architectural guidelines.
I mean, you could do it the other way, have no height limit and adjust it later. Does it have to be a lower limit now than adjust it higher if you, if the decision is to do that? I just want to understand the process.
You know, it doesn't have to be, now that, now that we're, we're at least recommending that we go forth with the fourth volume and have architectural design guidelines, you know, that the specifics of the building heights that have been in the plan are probably less crucial. If we're able to get into more detailed design guidelines and get into building massing and floor plate sizes and tower, you know, the skinny tower concept.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, is really when you look at the transit plan, and I, you know, I think this is, transit is going to be kind of a key to make this all work. Your maximum benefit is within two or three blocks from the transit line, and one of those blocks happens to be this area that you're limiting the height. And it just seems to me that by limiting height there, you're limiting the ability to get the densities that we need or want for some type of transit-oriented development to work. I just don't, well, I mean, we could talk about it later, it's not really questions.
Any questions at this point? Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, I guess Katie, I think it's probably yours. Part of this $23 million that we received in a grant, which we don't have yet, but which we theoretically have received in a grant, is sort of predicated on a transportation plan? I mean, that's part of the element that has to be devised. We have to put a transportation plan together, as well as the affordable component and those kinds of things. Is that correct?
Correct. The, the grant proposal was scored based on some transit factors, so realizing those transit factors will be...
Well, one of the things that I see going on, and there's been a couple newspaper articles recently in the paper about it, and that is the Capitol Mall and what they want to have at Capitol Mall, they're putting together some kind of a system, I mean, a study again, and this and that, and out of all of the things I saw listed that they were going to take a look at, streetcar wasn't one. And so I, what's happening on the other side of the river, because we can't have a streetcar system that starts at the Tower Bridge and comes to City Hall. That doesn't make any sense. I mean, it has to extend from Sacramento all the way through. So if that is, isn't going to be a, an option for the city of Sacramento, what is our fallback position? Or do we have a fallback position?
Volume three expresses the requirement as just a level of service because of the uncertainty of timing of streetcar. However, it also recognizes that streetcar is placemaking. It's very critical and important to shaping and guiding the nature of development, that it will drive the development. So I would, I think it assumes that the cities will, will work together.
Can there be some staff-to-staff meetings? Can there be some staff-to-staff meetings that, or discussions that really pinpoint, you know, is Sacramento going to be part of the streetcar process? I mean, I think we, I think we really need to know what that answer is, because it's integral to the whole formation of a traffic management plan, and it's, it's an important part of the Bridge District, because it's critical. So I think with some of these questions that are still out there on it, that if there could be some staff-to-staff discussion, that could raise our comfort level, I guess. Okay. Okay. That's it.
I'll just pick up on that issue that I think I mentioned earlier. I did mention that Sacramento City is being recommended for $2.3 million in this regional funding proposition. A portion of which, one of their winning proposals, one of their two winning proposals was for streetcar. So it's, it includes the, it's, and it's two-part streetcar study, which is both the, where should it go generally in the long term, and Callexbo and all these other things, but also the piece that we've been working on. So I, I share the, you know, the frustration and the uncertainty, but I think that, you know, there are pieces moving forward on the other side of the river. On the other hand, and also just to note, when the Folsom Light Rail Extension was done, there was, you know, very little interest from RT, very little interest from RT, and Folsom said, "We're just going to do this anyway, we're just going to do this anyway." And ultimately, it came together because Folsom stuck with the course and sort of left RT with no, no option. Now it's one of the most popular lines. So I think we have that option still in front of us. We also have, the, the streetcar and its pedestrian accelerator function and its placemaking function can work as a north-south riverfront line. I mean, so we, we continue to have the option of saying, "We'll, we'll build line number two in advance of line number one that might run from the Sturs Building as far down towards or into southward as we can get it to go as the backbone line." Today, we think of, well, we have to connect to the other side of the river because that's where jobs and restaurants are, but the whole point of what we're doing on the waterfront is to augment that with jobs and restaurants on our waterfront. And so that a, a streetcar backbone running up and down the waterfront on the west side of the river certainly can, can make sense even in the absence of a east-west line. So I, I'm not saying that we ought to do that, but I think we will, we will continue to have options even if some of the other alternatives are, don't work with the, with the state of Sacramento. But I don't think, I don't think they're ready to say no. I think they're, they're, they're still analyzing the various options and developing.
Well, I mean, I wish they would just set some, some properties aside in the, in the mall area, put an easement or whatever you want to call it in the mall area so that track can eventually be laid. I mean, that to me, it doesn't seem like that is a really big deal unless somebody is really behind the scenes, really not very supportive.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a, it's a problem. I mean, the Capitol Mall work will take some time, just as the I-5 decking announces took some time. And there are other, they are looking at other options for streetcar alignments, even for our, the connection to our, our side of the river that might proceed down our street or proceed up to the rail yards through the, through the intermodal station. So that, there, even if the Capitol Mall option were foreclosed, which I, I think certainly at this point, those discussions haven't even begun, there remain viable options for streetcar alignments on their side of the river. Just on the, because I know we're going to hear a lot of policy questions during the public hearing, but on the, just some of the technical pieces. So what, first one, it's the most mundane one of all, which is, we have, you have this section in Volume One, 3.3.6, that then has these subsections A through H. And, you know, for the life of me, the subsections F, G, and H have absolutely nothing to do with the heading of this section, which is about permitted uses, but F, G, and H are really whole plan procedures for how amendments, enforcement, and administrative updates and modifications get made, not regarding permitted uses alone, but regarding anything in any of the volumes. And so just structurally, as you look at the table of contents, you would never find the section about how the plan gets amended or how it would be administratively modified because it's hidden within this permitted uses section. So I would, just structurally, that ought to be, that ought to be modified. Second, and this will be of surprise to no one, the constant references to the Director of Community Development, and we've, we've, I have been meticulous, and the council's been at least tolerant of this notion that the, the city manager is the one that reports directly to the city council and who's accountable to the city council and is the only permanent officer that we have. I think as this year has shown, we can make changes to the structure of our administrative organization, and there may not be a Director of Community Development, no offense, Ms. Guntarsky, there may not be one at some, at some future date. And so referencing the Director of Community Development as the individual that has the power to make decisions that are essentially delegated by the city council is not appropriate. Those decisions ought to be delegated to the city manager, who then can, you know, rely upon the judgment of the Director of Community Development as he or she sees fit. The only exceptions are those functions that are akin to the zoning administrator and design administrator, which are designated functions that we have created and to which the city manager can assign anyone to, all right? He could assign you, Mr. Tilly, and bypass the Director of Community Development. But the general ones, including things like making amendments, administrative amendments to the plan, are something that really should only be undertaken by the city manager, because if we're, if we're dissatisfied, we do not have the power to terminate the Director of Community Development, only the city manager, and that's the individual that we hold accountable. So I want to suggest as, just as a whole plan revision, that those references be modified to, to the, to the city manager. And that's actually consistent with your recommendation in the, in the staff report in Number Seven, which is authorizing the city manager to make these technical data changes consistent with this Section 3.3.6H, which doesn't reference the city manager but references the Director of Community Development.
Comments duly noted.
I'm sorry, did you say something already?
I apologize. I would say we've, we've noted that, and we'll make, we'll make those corrections.
Then, so Tower Bridge Gateway and the financing portion of the implementation plan, Tower Bridge Gateway East as an allocation of, I think, $2.6 million out of traffic impact fees. So if, if we succeed in the, in the $4.2 million grant allocation, which requires, I think, about a million dollar, or we have proposed about a million dollar match, does that, is that materially affect that estimate of $2.6 million that would come from the traffic impact fees?
Yes, if the grant is secured, then the city can look at taking out some of the financing that's coming from other sources.
So we, so does it, does it automatically then start to move in our planning, in our, in our financing documents towards the next tier of projects or to the, I forget the distinction, the, the, what the other, the, but the, from backbone to supplemental, those sorts of changes, or, or does it just reaccrue back to our traffic impact fund and there's no, it's not reaccounted for somewhere in the financing strategy?
The traffic impact fees portion of financing was going to be advanced from tax increment. So essentially, it could free up that tax increment that it no longer needs to loan money to the traffic impact fee fund. This first phase of financing, while it does accomplish and complete probably 70%, 80% of the backbone, there's still remaining backbone to complete, there also is a water tank to be constructed. And so I think the city would, when we return to you with updated financing tables, will then bring clarity to how that grant has impacted the financing structure.
Okay, I mean, I get the redevelopment piece is a cash issue, but at some point we will collect those traffic impact fees still, which can't be spent on the water tank anyway, right? So.
Right. It just, it recognizes that Tower Bridge Gateway East is a regional amenity, that the, if you look at the traffic model, that the majority of trips generated through there do not come from the Bridge District, they also come from West Cap and, and Washington Neighborhood. So it was just, it was to reflect that fair share financing.
No, understood. I'm actually trying to use this as, to get a better understanding, but I expect, I hope and expect that we will achieve other grants in the future that we're not accounting for in the plan because we're being prudent, but that we will, you know, given our, given our record of success, we will, we will be competitive and achieve other dollars, how mechanically that will work in terms of moving resources to the supplemental desired projects or how, or how that will be accomplished, whether it will come back to us or whether it will just move down the line, or whether, you know, how we will bird dog it.
Well, we will be updating the financing plan, you know, regularly. The investment of tax increment is future discretionary actions of the council or the agency board, and that all of those investments will need to come in front of the agencies in order to commit and appropriate those funds for the improvement. So at this point in time, the next phase beyond this first five years is not, is not scoped. So the council will have discretion in updating the financing plans as we move forward. Technically, the county, the agency or council could determine they want to do a supplemental improvement ahead of the next phase of backbone. So it's, it will really be discretionary actions of the agency and council in terms of what the next phase is to be, but the, the principle embedded or the policy embedded in Volume Three is that the agency retains discretion over these tax increment investments. Now, it also has programmed that first phase of tax increment bonding into streetcar.
Okay. And this is a technical matter, so what, you're, the, all the red lines that indicate this is going to be moved into Volume Two or to Volume Three, you're asking us to do that, you're not giving us red lines, red line versions of those volumes, but it's going to be the same language that's moving, or what precisely are you asking us to approve in terms of migration?
Yes, it would be the same language that's moving, and I realize that it's a little difficult to see since both it's red strikeout and red highlight for comment.
And small.
The only, there is one change that, that the property owners brought to my attention that was missed when this was being brought in. On page 32 of the red line, about the middle of the page, just, just above the section on maximum building height, there's three bulleted items. And so that is going to be read as, or we're proposing the language be changed to reflect the fulcrum EIR that has been studied. And so beginning at the, the lead-in sentence, ancillary retail, instead of is restricted as follows, is provided as follows. The first bullet, it may comprise up to 5% on a promenade basis of the commercial uses or as studied in the SEIR or fulcrum EIR. And then everything else would remain the same. Okay?
Okay, while you're up on, on this, and we're looking at the red line version, on page 20, actually, this is in the original, well, no, it's, it's in yellow, so I guess it's new. On page 20, yellow means new, red means goodbye.
[laughing]
Right?
Uh, yellow.
So page 27 on the architectural design policies.
That was the left, that was the highlight indicating that was something staff would be looking for direction on.
I see, okay. So it says that we'll develop, number two is that we will develop architectural guidelines as Volume Four in consultation with the property owners, and the property owners' attorney has highlighted for me earlier in the week about how "in consultation with" can sometimes be read by a court to mean more than consultation and suggest concurrence. Are we clear that, that that's not what this means? That we will, we will be consulting with the, with property owners, but ultimately, I mean, it's, it's the city's, it's within the city's authority to adopt architectural guidelines if we, if we choose to do so.
That is correct, and I'll defer to council if he has other direction.
The case that she's talking about did take a fairly expansive view of the term consultation.
This is the Rancho Cordova case?
Yes, and read it way beyond where most jurisdictions would consider consultation to end at accepting input and discussing it. We can, we can use a different word. It is certainly true that ultimately it's the council's decision whether to adopt the guidelines. I think the idea here is that it wouldn't be done in a vacuum, that it would be done, you know, coordinated with or after consulting.
In the same way that we've done everything else on the project, I don't mean to suggest that we're, that we would, that we would have any desire or there'd be any benefit to us from going up like cowboys and adopting, you know, forcing architectural guidelines on folks, but I just want to, I want to preserve our, you know, our legal authority as well. So if that's clear that, that we're.
I think it's clear. We can certainly look at another word. The, the case that she's concerned with didn't say we had to just agree with, you know, whoever we were consulting with, but the, the expectation was there would be modifications made as a result of that consultation process. And since that has historically been how this has worked, I'm comfortable with that term.
Okay. Okay, those are all, that's all my technical questions. Thanks. Mayor Proton Pierce?
Yeah, on the, in the staff report on the statement of overriding considerations, on page 45, I was just curious, on the sixth, seventh, and eighth bullet, we're talking about decreased air quality, et cetera, et cetera, and in each of them, they reference additional wood burning. Are we going to act, is there going to be, is it going to be permitted for wood burning fireplaces, et cetera, in the, in this area?
No, that's, those were, those were holdovers from the original plan. We would not have.
But they're, they're, what, you're asking us to approve tonight, right?
Well, we're asking, on this overall, we're asking, we are asking the council to re-adopt the findings and overrides. Do you counsel recall, we'll did adopt these originally, is related to the Rayleigh Field Land Exchange Agreement last month, and, but we, we do need you this evening to re-adopt those, or when the council chooses to act, to re-adopt them, so in the context of the plan amendments, so that as individual projects come in the district, we can tear from this document and rely on the overrides.
Shouldn't we just delete those, though? I mean, if we're not, if, it's not an overriding consideration that we're going to allow wood burning, so why would we approve that?
Well, these in themselves are not the, are not the overrides. These are, these were a list of the impacts that were found. The overrides are actually, starting on the next page, the specifics of those considerations. I was starting on page 46.
All right, well, whatever. Now, so you've helped clarify because it kept referencing to 1993. So the, the impacts on the second page, the third and fourth bullet, what you're talking about, the, the traffic impacts to Fifth Street at US 50 and Capitol Mall and Third Street, those are from the 1993?
No, those, those are, those are new impacts.
Okay. So my, my question, just, just in general terms, now that we're looking at a cohesive transit plan, how far away are we? I mean, I don't like to approve overriding considerations if we don't have to. So how far away are we from being able to not have to, to make this finding for those intersections, given, you know, I, I kind of look at it, you know, in terms of, of the total plan for this, which is both cars, transit, bicycles, pedestrian, parking, the transportation system management plans, the whole, the whole project has, has a vision. How far away are we from not impacting these two intersections?
Well, these are two kind of specific, you know, cases. With respect to the first one, the impact TRA-1, this is really dealing with the segment of Fifth Street between the off-ramp and the on-ramp, and this is an area where we have a limitation, and that's the actual freeway support structures. It's kind of a, it's kind of a choke point, if you will, and it prohibits us from making any widening of the road in that area to make this, you know, to make this impact less insignificant. So, you know, this, this is an area where, you know, we have this constraint that we may never be able to, you know, fully deal with as long as the bridge structure remains, you know, as it, as it exists today in this particular segment. And then the second one, and again, this is, would be a locate, will site located in the city of Sacramento, where historically we have not, I think there's a understanding, if we will, I want Jeff to maybe weigh in on this, but this is an impact that has occurred in the city of Sacramento, and we have not historically applied mitigation to impacts that occur in Sacramento.
Can we cite one for another jurisdiction?
Do you mean have we actually required mitigation activities in the city of Sacramento?
Yeah, so it's, you know.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, this is, it's a term, it's a. This is a type of situation where the feasibility of doing any improvements there is questionable since it would be beyond our control to do?
Okay. All right, thank you.
So on the overriding considerations, we don't, we don't mention air quality at all on the overrides. We do on the, on the, on the unavoidable impacts, right? That, that development under the plan is going to result in, beyond just the wood burning, it will result in decreased air quality in the plan area.
it will result in decreased air quality in the plan area and the air basin, and then we don't give any overriding considerations. That, I mean, this, this way of thinking about urban development is a bit obsolete now. I mean, it's pretty well documented that this form, this form of development will, will reduce the, the growth in air pollutants and carbon emissions, and for the, at least for the air basin, and certainly for, I mean, and the plan area too, because the plan area is so central to the, to the overall, I mean, it matches the overall quality of the, of the basin as a whole, but we don't even mention that, right? So, I, I mean, it's, it's there in the, in number eight by implication, if you know how air quality works, that providing fewer trips and shorter lengths and reduced vehicle miles traveled will reduce the, what would have otherwise occurred in terms of growth in air pollution, but it's not, it's not, it's not mentioned explicitly. And, and to me, that is one, that's one of the key overriding considerations, is that this plan does improve the long-term outlook on air quality for both the plan area and the basin. So, I don't...
But I thought, I was thinking that while we're, we're doing a better job, overall, there's still more, more...
Well, and we might even reference the, I mean, the per person...
Yeah, do something like that.
Right, because, I mean, that's in the, I think it's in the EIR for the MTP, for the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, but it's just, I just, it's better to have a correspondence between the impact that we're describing, which sort of, which sort of leaves it out there. Well, you know, it's going to get harder to breathe, but we're going to, you know, link commercial retail and public, quasi-public uses. It doesn't, it doesn't track that we are actually paying attention to the air quality issues, and in fact, one of the reasons to do this is to have better air quality, reduce asthma, and save the planet. So, just, to me, I don't, I don't know how complex it is to, to add that to the, to the statement. We've done this once before on a port issue, on a port statement of overriding considerations, but I think it's a really critical link to draw. It's the whole basis of SB three seventy-five and, and state policy in this area, but it still doesn't seem like it's a big stretch for us to, to mention it, to give it two sentences in the statement of overriding considerations. All right, any other questions at this time? All right, then, that will open the public hearing on item seven, and I have a couple of requests to speak on the item, all of which reference, let me go after Mark Friedman, who has not turned in a card, but I get, I guess that one's by implication, that Mark and Tina Thomas will be up first.
Good evening, my name's Tina Thomas. Let's see, is this going to come down, I guess?
Oh, and Madam Clerk, for the applicants, and we have a couple of them, if you might set the timer, because this is a, a project with applicants, to five minutes instead of three.
Okay, so, good evening, Mayor Cabal, and members of the council. My name's Tina Thomas, I'm with the law firm of Ramey, Thomas, Moose, and Manley in Sacramento, and I'm of counsel to the firm. First of all, I just want to really thank your staff. This has been a long road, and I do want to thank Charlene and the two Kates and David and Jeff and Toby. It's, it's hard when you're trying to marry the vision of the council with the costs of the property owners and to try to get that to make it fit, but there's been a lot of meetings. I know there's been a lot of weekend work, and we really appreciate that. I think we're, we're almost there, and so I just wanted to say my heartfelt thanks to, to your staff. I thought it would be a good idea to first start by a little bit of a status, volume by volume, about where we are and where we may still have some outstanding issues that need to be resolved. First, with regard to volume one, with the changes that have been made in volume one, although we just got a copy of it right before the hearing, it looks like everything is there, and so I guess we would indulge the council to allow us to make changes that are, just for consistency or clarity, if you were to adopt it tonight, if there were things that were just not consistent, or there was some lack of clarity, if we could make some very minor changes, you know, since we just got to look at this this evening. So, other than that, volume one, again, it looks like we have reached an agreement on that volume. With regard to volume two, with the change with regard to retail that was set forth by Charlene, that, that's very helpful for us, that makes a, a big difference to us. So, that involves the regulations that were imported from one into two. We still would like to have the issue of the height addressed this evening and have that taken out of the plan. That would also mean the map on page thirty-three, and on page thirty-three, there's a map that shows the height restrictions, but it also describes in very, very, very tiny print the step-back requirements, and those step-back requirements are impossible to achieve. It would require an eighty-five foot setback, or step-back on the height, so from the front and from the back, and if you had a narrow piece of property, you can construct anything. So, I think we need to have that height restriction and that step-back restriction removed. And that's, again, the map on page thirty-three. With regard to volume three, we're content with volume three. The technical appendices contains the draft finance plan. We, we still have two outstanding issues on the draft finance plan. If you choose to adopt volumes one, two, and three tonight, we would ask you to keep the finance plan in draft form until we can resolve two issues. And those two issues are the mechanism for reimbursement on one C if we don't move forward, fulcrum doesn't move forward timely or complete, complete their development, and also the one-time tax provision or repayment for state office buildings. So, we still need to resolve those two issues with staff. So, were you to move forward with volumes one, two, and three tonight, we would ask that the draft finance plan remain in draft format. With regard to volume four, I just want to make it clear, we're not opposed to architectural guidelines, we're opposed to the ones we've been given. We haven't had a chance to review them. Once we have a chance to review them and to go through them, and, and hopefully without height restrictions, we think that we can get there, we just need to give them the same amount of scrutiny that we've been given to one, two, and three. So, going forward, what do we need? We need a development agreement. I'd like to pick up what, on Councilmember Johansson's statement, could we get something by December sixteenth? I would hope so. We've had a lot of conversations, I think we could get there, and I'd like to see us make that effort, because it's going to be very difficult for us to record covenants on our property as required by one C unless we know what the whole package is. And a lot of that package is part of the development agreement, so we would hope that we could have something by December sixteenth. Katie mentioned, Katie Jacobson mentioned the urban standards, we'd like to have some sort of a timing on when that's going to occur. That's very important for us to be able to develop. So, I think that addresses sort of the open questions. Again, if you're going to adopt one, two, and three, we'd like some clarification with regard to the heights and the step-backs, and then we'd also like to keep that finance plan in a draft format. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Friedman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, thank you for the opportunity to address you. For the record, I'm Mark Friedman. I brought some notes for my remarks tonight.
I'll cut it back to three minutes.
Two years and a foot tall. And I know that, that sounds like a Subway sandwich commercial, but that's how long we've been spending, putting together the specific plan, and that's how much paper we've produced. I can't tell you that I've counted every one of the words in there, but I can tell you that we've had detailed discussions, property owners and staff, over every single one of them in here. Two days ago, I would have come here with a very different characterization of where we are in this plan, but I have to echo Tina's comments and Charlene's as well. There've been really tremendous efforts on the part of your team and on the part of the property owners to put this document in a position that we can come here tonight and support it. And I'm, I'm proud of what we've produced, not because it's a foot tall, not because it contains hundreds of thousands of words, but because when you think about the kind of neighborhood that this will produce, it'll be one of the most innovative neighborhoods, one of the greenest neighborhoods that anybody has attempted to build anywhere in the country. It'll be built with all of the smart growth principles in mind that you as a council and that we as developers have been hoping to achieve. You know, it's interesting to talk about development at, at a time like this when, when building anything new seems really difficult, and it wouldn't even be possible to conceive if this weren't done in partnership. I want to thank all of you for the commitments that the city has made to make this project a success. You've already made very, very significant investments in helping to move the rail off the waterfront and to relocate the cement plant, and you've spent really countless hours figuring out how to modify the rules and regulations that really most communities have lived by to make it possible to do a, a green development. By the same token, I think the city gets an awful lot out of this project, and it, it gets some significant commitments from the property owners to benefit the public. Chief among those, you know, are the neighborhood that I talked about, which, you know, in addition to embodying those smart growth principles, will include a dedication of the entire waterfront to the public. We're going to have nearly a mile-long of waterfront promenade that over the course of time will become a really significant public amenity that we think will not only be a defining aspect of this district, but really one of the defining aspects of the region. In addition to that, the property owners have committed to form a seventy million dollar CFD to enable us to build the backbone and many of the amenities that'll make the project work. And on top of that, I mean, you're well aware of the Prop one C grant, in order to keep those funds in place, the property owners and the city have had to agree to come together to build nearly seven hundred homes. It's scary looking at the prospect of building homes in this market, but I have to tell you, I'm excited about it. I think that we have a neighborhood that is going to be attractive and exciting to people, and I'm looking forward to get going and getting building. So, I, I, I want to thank you for your efforts, we're at, at an important milestone tonight. As Tina said, we still have lots of work to do. The most important thing, I think, is to make the completion of the development agreement an important priority for all of us. That document contains, you know, mutual promises and commitments that we're making to each other that are absolutely critical, both to ensuring that you get from us, you know, what, what you want and what you deserve, and that we get the kind of support that's necessary to move this project forward. Thank you very much.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Friedman. Lynn Yaxson?
Hi, I'm Lynn Yaxson, representing the Unger Riverfront. I too would like to echo what Mark says. It has been an amazing process to work with staff over the last several years. We've butted heads, and we've found a way to come to conclusions on things that I thought we'd never be able to come to conclusions on. One of the things that's come up tonight is near and dear to us. It has to do with your advice to them about building heights and step-backs. We would prefer not to have any building heights or step-backs at this time, particularly along the river. Much has changed along the riverfront since the ninety-seven specific plan. We have set, our building setback line is significantly further, what, west of the river. It's, used to be about thirty feet, and now it's anywhere from sixty to a hundred feet, which means that the property that we have to build on is, is significantly less. And we're required to build a certain amount of density to meet the financing plan for the district, and if we have reduced heights, it reduces our ability to meet the financing of the district. The other thing I wanted to discuss was, one of the notions is that it, it is by reducing the heights, it, it, it allows for drawing views back in landward. And there is a section on page twenty, I'll just read to you. It says, "The Bridge District's topography generally slopes up from a low point in the western extremity to a bluff above the Sacramento River in the eastern part of the site, providing an opportunity to extend visibility of the waterfront environment deep into the core of the Bridge District via access corridors." We have multiple access view corridors throughout the riverfront. They range anywhere from fifty to, on Garden, still Garden Street, a hundred and six feet. So, they're very wide, and as you step down on them, you'll be able to have these wonderful framed views of the river and of Sacramento across the river. I also want to make some comments on the architectural guidelines. As a daughter and a sister of architects, and someone who has sat on an architectural committee, design committee for twenty years, we have just received these architectural guidelines, we haven't had any ability to comment on them. And I have concerns when we talk about moving building heights from here to the architectural design guidelines, when we haven't had a chance to comment on them, and when we've considered deferring them until after the specific plan has been approved. At this point, reviewing the architectural guidelines, there are sections that are absolutely acceptable, and there are sections that are unacceptable. And so, we would, either, either we keep, we keep height, building heights and setbacks out of the architectural guidelines, or we burn the midnight oil until December fifteenth to get this done, along with the development agreement, at the same time the specific plan is approved. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lynn. Dan Ramos?
Thank you, Mayor Cabal, and members of City Council. Well, I got a smaller stack, so I might be able to get done within five minutes here tonight, but I, I just want to come here tonight and say something that needs to be said, because it's pretty obvious, but it doesn't get said, and is that we're here tonight putting together an agreement, not only on zoning and stuff, we have a development agreement to do, but what's unique about this whole Bridge District, and what we got going on here today, is that we've talked about the triangle and how, what a wonderful location, we've been talking about that since the nineteen ninety general plan, when it worked real hard with Dean Unger to recognize this area and, and get it to where, where it's at today. But what's unique about this is the property owners. You are not dealing with someone from Atlanta, you're not dealing with Goldman Sachs or Morgan Stanley, you're dealing with families that have been committed to this community for over fifty years. We have that type of history here in this community, the, the people that are behind this. That includes the Freeman family, when Mort started his practice here in the fifties, our family's been here forever, the Unger and the Yaxson family have been committed here for a long time, and Dean's visions have been inspirational getting this going here. The Clark family's been here with a major business and very committed to this community. We include our Savage family, and we have other property owners that have been committed to a long time in this district. It's pretty unique in the development, in, in the Sacramento area to have these type of community people. We are grounded here, we believe in this, we're dedicated, we are committed, we want this to succeed. So, we're very anxious to go forward, and we appreciate all the efforts that the staff and the community has put forward to making this a great plan. We're excited about it, but you look us in the eye, we'll look you back, because we're committed. I just want you guys to know that. That's what this is about tonight. Real quickly, boy, I got three minutes to go, watch out. Just wanted to touch on one subject that's, we've been kind of dabbling with and we really are excited about, and this is, you're talking to the guy that's been, kind of come along with this green thing, I'm not the greenest guy there is, but Christopher's been working on me, I'm getting there. I understand the transportation stuff, whatever. And we're trying to do this Leeds Neighborhood Community thing, and it's so important that we do it. I think it's important, and Mark's been talking about a lot of, it's important for us to get this recognition, this distinction about this community. We happen to be in a very unique site. It's high. Now, a long time ago, the community of Broderick, when the railroad wanted to dredge the river and get to, get the, have a place to put deposits of sand, the broader community talked about assessing themselves and lifting themselves up fifteen feet, but for some reason or another, they didn't do it, and they went over to the, to the railroad side of the property where we are, and lifted up that property fifteen to eighteen feet high of sand. We're a big sandbar. It's very unique to our drainage system there, very, very unique, in terms of what we can do, in terms of a very green solution to our drainage. We've been working very closely with staff and the engineers in terms of a very green solution there. We're not all the way there, and we, we've been, I know it's been tough because we've got timelines, we've got deadlines with engineering, it's very important to get drainage done first to be able to do all the other infrastructure, and we hear that loud and clear. And we feel we're working with some of the finest staff, and again, we, just ultimate respect for Mark Collier, Charlene, and the engineering staff here, but we need to push the envelope a little further. We, the whole idea about this sandbar we're on is infiltration. There's an awful lot of it there, we can get water to infiltrate down quickly. It's all about porous concrete and stuff, it's about storage capacity. I don't want to get a lot of technical details, because I'm not the, but there's some good science out there that we're leaving off the table, we need to get back into the discussion there. We need to get back into the discussion there, in terms of what we're doing here. It's about reducing costs, and this is where I really starting to buy the green concept, Christopher, is that if you do green, you can save money. And this is one area where we can save money and the city can save money. It's about reducing some piping costs and stuff, and about, you know, so we just want to encourage, please, have us get back in the room there and continue the discussion. There's been, we're kind of a stalemate now, we'd like to go, we just want to understand kind of where we got this kind of compromise solution that we feel we can push a little further and actually save some money and have the most, the better green plan. So that's all we're asking. We have, I think there's a meeting coming up this Friday with the engineers. We encourage your support on that. We'd love to push the envelope on this. It will really help us in the lead, Neighborhood Community designation. It's all about drainage. You guys have done a great job on transit. We've done, we've got everything there, pedestrian, we've got everything there, drainage is where we need to go. Just want to push it a little bit more with the science. It's there, we can do it. So it's all about reducing pipes and stuff. I think we can get there in this little bit, I got 14 seconds. Just remember, when the river's high, that western head flow goes down. The ballpark is 15, the right field's at 15 feet, never ever flooded, we have had some high flows. That's the key, it goes back down. So we'll talk about that some more. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ramos. That's all the project applicants, if we can return the timer to its normal time. Denise Seals, we have the West Sacramento Chamber.
Just going to take this down a little bit. There you go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. You know, I have occasion to have conversations with business leaders on both sides of the river, and generally, the conversation starts with, "West Sacramento, wow, you guys have some really exciting things happening over there," which leads directly into, "What's happening with the Bridge District? What's, when's it starting? What do you know? When can you tell us what you know?" So clearly, the region waits with great anticipation. So on behalf of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce, I'm here tonight first to also congratulate and acknowledge the very hard work and careful efforts of city staff and property owners involved in the Bridge District's specific plan, and second, to encourage your support. You know, the result of the plan and their hard efforts is a, is a plan that protects the city's financial interests while it creates a plan that can actually work. We could really do this, and it'll result in responsible development. Development that creates environmentally responsible, dense urban neighborhood that continues a legacy of our progressive, innovative city, you know, and in the chamber's opinion, provides much-needed momentum for the riverfront and the projects along a riverfront. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Seals. That concludes the request for comment on item seven, so we're going to close the public hearing and return it to the council. Let me say first, this is a big evening for a lot of reasons. I know when I first, when I first came to town and came to the library, this was the first document I checked out of the library was the Triangle specific plan, because I saw it and leafing through, trying to understand what my new city was about, and I see Mr. Beers was Mayor Potem at the time of the adoption of that plan, too. Mr. Kristof was on the council as well. And it, even at that moment, it was a strong statement about what imagination and aspiration this community had, and it has been that way ever since. This, this idea that this was where the future of our community would be, and, and the possibility that reopening up the waterfront but creating a truly urban-inspired environment was something that would, was appreciated by folks from throughout the community. Every neighborhood, every background saw the possibility and wanted to see it realized. Then in the last, you know, the last 10 years, and particularly more recently, the work on the Bridge District as new property owners have come to the table, and as our staff team and the council and our volunteer commissions and others have put their best thinking to it, I mean, we've seen an overall outline for Bridge District vision, which has gotten more efficient in terms of the economies of producing it, but has gotten even better, much, much better than, than the original vision, building on what we're all learning and our strengthened confidence about what a place like West Sacramento can produce and sustain. The, you know, the, I can't believe I was saying this, the Dan Ramos's references to all of the environmental and sustainability initiatives in this plan really are going to, you know, they stand out as being a marker of West Sacramento and our waterfront being, you know, one of the, you know, most nationally distinctive places for sustainable development, and then the consequences for that sustainable development, meaning great, healthy places to live that support the kind of vibrant waterfront life that we've been aspiring to, and that, that also produces substantial economic benefits for the folks that are living and working and doing business there as well. And so I just think this is super exciting, as we've talked about all the details, and certainly as I raised questions about the page numbering and all that, that we shouldn't lose how important a milestone this is, especially given the timing that we're in. And, you know, on our, on our side of the equation, we've had a team of staff working on this, half of whom have changed their jobs in the, in the last six to nine months, and have seen many of their colleagues retire or move over to being wastewater engineers or parks maintenance workers or wherever, planners and redevelopment folks go off to in, in, in times like this. They've had to deal with some severe challenges, because the workload hasn't, hasn't changed, but their ability to accomplish it has required even more from them, and they've stepped up. It would be so easy just to say, "I just, I can't deal with all these changes that the property owners want to make, I can't deal with all the council's expectations, it just can't be done," you know, "and we're recommending that we mothball everything, and we just can't reach an agreement." And that's not what's happened at all. Our staff has been creative, they've worked above and beyond the call to try to produce this, because I know they're, they're just as committed, and they believe it just as much as we do about the potential that's here. And so I'm very proud of the, of the city organization, and, you know, as we get through the details, there may be changes here, changes there, but I think the, the staff team deserve a lot of kudos for the level of work, the quality and creativity and the work and the commitment to, to producing something that's truly extraordinary. And then on the other side of the, of the table, you know, many of us have been talking with developers and property owners in other parts of the city that are, you know, they're, they're beaten up, they cannot, they cannot see next week because it's just so depressing. The market is a challenge, they don't know, there's a huge amount of uncertainty in the outside world. And, and we've had, you know, dozens of requests from folks saying, you know, "We're going to drop our project unless you can make the world like it was 18 months ago," which we can't do. We don't, we are creative, but we're not, we're not, we're not omnipotent. And the property owners here have rolled up their sleeves for the last 12 months in particular, but for a long time before that, as though, not as though the market challenges don't exist, but as though they're in it for the long run. They're committed to the project into the, into the future, and that it's, it's worth it to them, but they, but it's part of their own personal legacies as well as their own development interests, and they have worked just as hard and have been just as creative and pushed us as hard with as much passion as our, as our staff. And what has resulted from that is a really extraordinary set of documents here tonight that represent a very high level of aspiration, but one that is actually achievable with, you know, a few, a few of the right economic assumptions coming into place. And so I just, I want to congratulate folks, however the specific issues get disposed of, they're, they're so minor, really, when you look at the, at the, what we are attempting, the lift that we're trying to achieve with, with this overall project. So that's my general comments, but I wanted to now invite members of the council on this, on either the generals or some of the specific issues that have been raised this evening, starting with Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, I'd just like, either Charlene or David, explain to me a little bit about the step back, because, I mean, it looks like some parts of it could be 85, 90 feet. I mean, and, and I think it was Tina that had said something to the effect that, that really makes, especially the Unger's piece, very, very difficult to develop. So, I mean, I guess explain that. How do we, or how can we rectify that, if, if it can even be rectified?
You know, the step back concept deals principally with building form, and would, would have buildings that would, say, for example, front on riverfront, you know, that immediate buildings have a maximum height of 85 feet. And then as you, as you move beyond that towards the waterfront buildings and off of riverfront, buildings could rise to be as tall, in some cases, of 200 feet in that area.
I get all, I've never been one for height restrictions, anyway. I mean, this goes back when we did our first general plan. I mean, it's, the taller, the better, as far as I'm concerned, but, at least I remember some folks, but anyway. That doesn't, I mean, so, so the, the step back really is pertaining to the height rather than the footprint of the building itself, because there's going to have to be properties that are set aside for the Riverwalk, you know, and, and that sort of thing. So is that what it is? It's really the, it's really the footprint of the building?
Well, indirectly, you would, you could definitely influence the footprint of the building, because with those, with that step back in place to achieve the maximum square footage that's been allocated to the, to the block, they may end up needing a larger footprint to be able to, you know, achieve maximum build-out. With, with the area that Ms. Yakson, you know, referenced with that, in that step back in place, it may very well be, you know, very problematic to implement the step back as it's, as it's shown in the plan in that particular area, and so that, that may be an area that the council may wish to consider making modifications tonight.
All right.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think, I think just based on the economy now and what we're seeing going on and dealing with the FEMA issue and the general state of residential development, and the general level, as the speakers had mentioned about the Bridge District, is the amount of money the city has, the amount of money we can expect to have in the next five or 10 years, and plus the discussions we're having with the general plan now and the alternates we're looking there, that really, this is where the action's going to be in West Sacramento for the next five years, maybe more, five or 10 years. And so I, I think that, you know, we're, we're going to be having strategy sessions, council strategy sessions in January, but the Bridge District and the Triangle have been on the radar for a number of years to try and develop that. And now is really the time that I think everybody needs to step up. We're really close on a lot of issues. It sounds like a lot was resolved over the last couple, couple days, and I think it's from the collaboration that's been happening between the city and the developers. But our goal has always been to develop, as the mayor had said, a vibrant riverfront with a lot of amenities, restaurants, entertainment, things for people to do, places for people to go, creating a dense urban environment with narrower streets, creating more intimacy. We've got the view corridors, so it's really just a nice, nice place to be, which would be a draw for West Sacramento, which I think gets into what the mayor was talking about, having a north-south streetcar line that, you know, that it's not a bad option to hook up north and south, West Sacramento, to this, this district that's created. One of the things we haven't really talked about yet was the extent of jobs that are going to be created by this. I think it's going to be huge. One of the things I want to make sure that we're doing, I mean, even now, when we're looking at construction management and project management and contracts that are ready to go out now, consulting contracts, the city has a buy-local shop local theme. The city needs to start putting action to its words and reaching out to local business community that's actually doing this work and helping our local businesses out and whatever we can do, because this, again, could be the biggest thing that's going to be happening in West Sacramento for, for quite some time, and we do have, I think, at least a stated policy here to help local businesses. So I know I'm going to be looking at that carefully when we start looking at requests for bids and in that whole process, to make sure that we're reaching out to everybody in West Sacramento, all businesses, and perhaps the chamber might be able to help by getting the word out. The other thing about this, this project that, again, the mayor has mentioned is just the whole, I don't really, I mean, green to me, it seems more of a marketing term these days, but it's more the sustainability of the development that we're doing there. There's a bill going through Congress now. It's called the Livable Communities Act of 2009. And what this is going to do, at least in its present form, is to start an office of sustainable housing in communities, it's going to establish a comprehensive planning grant program, and to sustain a sustainable challenge grant program, and for other purposes. So, you know, I think this whole, what we're doing here is, I think it's going to be the name of the game in terms of getting grant funding as well, to incorporate transfer-oriented development, high, high-density walkability, you know, creating, it goes into healthy lifestyles that we're looking at, getting people to walk some, not use the cars so much. So transit looks like it's going to be a key element of this, which it rightly should be. When we're looking at conceptually developing the riverfront, I'm a little, little bit hesitant about being too strict on guidelines at this point. I think probably what staff should be doing is, you know, looking at council policy on what we want to do there, because I think really the developers are going to come out, whoever the developers are going to be building these buildings in the future, they're going to be coming up with some designs. I mean, the place is going to cry for unique structures, and, you know, I don't want to have designs stopped because of some issue in the design guidelines that are too restrictive. I would rather have some flexibility in that and to basically get the creative juices flowing on some of these structures that are going to be coming in, because, you know, the result of that has been Sturrs, result of that has been Fairview. So some really, really unique buildings that are coming in, and I don't want to preclude that because of some guidelines. So, you know, I would really encourage staff to work with, with the development committee on how that's framed at this point. I mean, we can always come back and, I mean, there's, there's always going to be a review process with planning commission, with city council, and we did a similar thing with Fairview that, or Fairfield, that, you know, looking at the retail on the bottom floor and modifications. So just through that dialogue, we were able to make the project a lot better without having things really that restrictive. I want to say something about the, the collaboration that's occurred back a couple years ago when, or probably even longer than that. You know, my, my vision of this process was to bring the developers to the table, bring the staff to the table, and work out a deal. Through the T-TAC, we were able to do that, and so the result of that has been developers, property owners, making concessions among themselves on aligning their properties, swapping properties, getting things worked out among themselves for the common goal of creating this big development. You know, we've got streets in place now, we've got basically this whole thing visioned out. It was through that collaboration, and staff, and Charlene, Dave, you both, Katie, you both are, all three have been very instrumental in making this thing happen, and I've heard nothing but good reports or comments from, from how you're, you're working with the community, and I hope that continues at this last crunch, because we are kind of at a crunch time. We've got the city on one side making commitments. We've got a lot of money going in here, there's a lot at stake. We've got some plans if, if things don't move forward, and I, you know, I would hope you'd be looking at some type of phasing of infrastructure, so you're not building this stuff out too quickly, you're kind of building into the growth that happens. And at the same time, the property owners are committing a lot of money and a lot of their future in this project, that there's a lot of people that have skin in this game that really is, is, I mean, it's incredible at this point. So in, in the other aspect of this is, we've got to be, we've got to look at ways to be economically competitive. We've talked about this a number of times on council here, whether it's in terms of impact fees or, or whatever, but the fact is that we can't build a project here if we're not competitive with across the river. And I know the mayor's been working on dialogue and the collaboration with Sacramento on, on building riverfronts, and I think that's great. I mean, there's room enough on both sides of the river to be putting these kind of projects in, but we need to be in the game. We need to have projects that are cost-effective and can actually be sold. So, you know, what I would like at least staff to look at is, are ways to really make this cost-effective. I know there's, there's always going to be a risk and reward analysis about that, but, you know, one issue is, is they mentioned this, the permeable cement. You know, that, from my understanding, that has a potential to eliminate the need for a retention base and possibly a retention base in possibly in the future, which is a huge cost. It also addresses some of the redundancy that is normal, is the standard thinking on doing roads to maybe something that's a little more creative. So I would really encourage staff to, you know, push that a little bit and see what we can do. Because that, to the extent we start having design that builds costs in this, it's just going to be the projects less competitive. Of course, we need to consider public safety and, and that. We can't do something that's not safe. But that doesn't mean we can't look at something that's new. And, and, you know, the, the thing about that technology, too, if we're looking at building this sustainable development, huge sustainable development, you know, I think for, for me, those are bragging rights that we would have. We've got this new technology that's working. It's the same thing as, you know, we, we're talking about the port, same type of sustainability, same type of concept that to, to do something there that we're proud of doing, that we can say, look, another example of West Sacramento really creating something that's unique. We've got some of the projects coming into port, I think are going to do that. So what, as far as specific direction outside of what I've, I've said, th- this whole issue of the development agreement, we're asking the, the developers to sign on the line, to commit financial resources on the line, and they don't even have an agreement now. An agreement hasn't even been, been presented, I think, in a form that, that you're actually going to look at signing. So I think it's absolutely, absolutely critical to get that done now, as quick as possible. And I would, with council's concurrence, you know, make that a top priority, to get that done by the next meeting. The, the architectural guidelines, I've talked a bit about that. I, I know that Ms. Thomas had, had talked about that as well. But it's really, I would just encourage staff to work through with, with the developers on creating something. I know as far as the urban standards, part of, part of the issues with, with this area is, is we're, we're going to have a lower level of service. We're going to have noise. I mean, it's going to be a downtown. We don't really have any ordinances right now that address that. So, you know, I think our, our, our vision is to create this dense urban area. We don't really have the ordinances to back that up. So what, I mean, what I would like to see is maybe staff could start working on those ordinances and bringing them back on what these new ordinances will be. We've, we've done it in a, in a couple of other areas. I think it was at the parks. We've, we've had, we've had some, some staff at getting different urban park standards. But I think, you know, noise level and all the other issues that are, are unique to this environment, I think, you know, we should start working on that as, as, as soon as possible. Let's see what else. I, I think I talked about the, oh, the height. Again, I don't, I don't really understand why we would need a height restriction along the river. I mean, just, just looking at this practically, if you've got a 150-foot building and you've got a 300-foot building behind it, the top 300, 150 feet of the building behind it are going to have a view over the building. The other half are not going to have a view. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. Plus, I think when you're looking at the kind of downtown we're trying to build, I mean, look at the San Francisco skyline, for example. It's not ramped up. I mean, it's, you basically have buildings that are kind of different mixes and matches. And I think that's the attraction. Sacramento's the same way. So I, I, I kind of think that having a ramped-up view would look kind of odd, particularly since Sacramento's not doing it and we're going to be mirroring that. So I definitely would not be in favor of, of either the setback or the height restrictions that you have in there. And I want to, you know, just get those out of there at, at this point. So I think those are the comments. Thanks.
All right. Further comments? Mayor President Beers?
Well, I concur with, with all of the comments related to how close we are. And I, I was also struck by Danny's comment about the families that have been part of this for, for a long time. I think we're really fortunate to have this group of property owners that are still in the game right now. You know, so I, I want to take a moment just to recognize all of their, their efforts on this, as well as our own staff. It, it appears to me that we're very close to having all of the, the main pieces of this. I need a couple of things clarified. This discussion on the architectural guidelines, volume four, I don't, I didn't get a volume four.
Yeah, those, those will be coming to you in the, in the future.
So that's not part of tonight's action. It's not in the staff report. So I think there's plenty of time to keep working on, on that issue. And when we get back, just to discuss the, the maximum height issue, generally, I think I recall back, back in the old days in 1993, I think our concern at the time was, was really, how did you parcel out the height issues here? And, and I think that we came up with a plan that kind of tried to make the center tall and then, you know, work, work its way down. We were looking at the entire bridge, well, at the time, triangle, but the, the whole district, how would, how would it look overall? I think one of the main things, and, and I guess what I really need help on is, I think at the time, we were talking about, well, you don't want 150-story building and, and 20, two-story buildings. You know, you, you need some, some way of managing all of this. So, so really, there's, there's a certain level of density for the whole Bridge District. And that's ultimately the control, correct?
Yeah. And that, and that density is parceled out by neighborhood. It isn't, you know, uniform, you know, across, you know, every block and...
So, so there's no que, I mean, we're not actually, there's no concerns that have been expressed by the owners regarding the density allocations, how that, that's played out in this specific plan?
Yeah, we did not hear that this evening.
Right. No, and I didn't hear it either. So, so I think it probably is, is appropriate that we find a way to resolve this issue on height and not make it so rigid. If the density is going to control it, then I think we need, you know, we can probably find some way to wor, worry about this height issue. And maybe it is through, through the architectural standards that we come up in this volume four. So I, I would be supportive of looking at, at something that, that resolves it in, in that way. Since the densities are going to control, that, that to me seems to be the, the primary issue. And, and so when, when is, what's the timeframe for the architectural standards? Is that, that's probably into next year?
Yeah, that would, that would be probably our next follow-up action once we complete the development agreement.
Right. And there's no time-sensitive issue on that at this juncture, correct?
Really, to the architectural guidelines? I believe it's something that the owners are very much interested in seeing, and of course...
But in terms of trying to get what we've got before us today, that's, that's the logical next step. It doesn't have, I mean, I'm not saying to delay it. I'm just saying it doesn't have to be done before December 15th.
No, that's, that's correct.
Even with, with marrying the height issue into that, does that have to be...
Well, you know, the heights, the heights, you know, really are, and if you think about it somewhat more abstractly, you're kind of dealing with building form. And that's something that definitely can be dealt with in the architectural guidelines, perhaps in a, in a qualitative manner that does not have, you know, you know, fixed, you know, height limits.
Right. Okay. Well, I, I would support that direction in this. And, and I know there's been some issue raised regarding whether the planning commission has a role in that. It seems to me that the planning commission discussed it. We've discussed it. It just seems to me that that's just an evolution of it. So I, I don't, I don't accept that that's a, a reason to have to send this back to the planning commission. Then the, so those were really the two, two issues that I heard that were, you were asking for direction from council on. As far as the, the development agreement, is it the staff's understanding or direction that, that we should be able to bring that to closure by the December 15th meeting? Is that, is that where we're headed?
The development agreement needs to go to planning commission.
Uh-huh.
Would need to go in front of a planning commission hearing ahead of council. So that may delay it beyond the next council meeting. I think realistically, we're probably looking at January.
But that, we don't have a real choice in that, then?
I don't think so.
When's the next planning commission?
Yeah, the development agreement requires a notice public hearing at the planning commission as well as a, as an ordinance, which would mean two readings before the council.
Okay. So is that, I, I guess the, the nature of my question is, what's our timeframe for proceeding on that particular issue? What, when do we anticipate bringing that, that forward?
Our target date would be the first available meeting following those, of council following the two planning commission hearings. We would be targeting January for execution, if that's possible.
So is, is it going to be on, is a draft going to be on a planning commission meeting in December?
They're shooting for that.
We will attempt.
That would be, that would be the plan, yes.
Assuming that you have an agreement, right? So this is not one of those areas where we're, where we, it's 99% done. Everybody's seen it and reviewed it and they've signed off. And it's just a mechanical process of getting it to us. It is, that, that work has, there has to be a deal made on the development agreement in addition to the technical work getting done.
We are in substantive agreement on the deal terms, but there are a lot of exhibits, a lot of detail that need to be amended into the document.
Just, just so it's clear, there have been an exchange of drafts of a development agreement. It's not as if no one has seen one.
Oh, and I'm not suggesting there hasn't. I, I'm just curious where, where we are with that issue and...
It's our expectation that it'll go to, go to planning commission at their meeting, should be the third week of, well, second or third week of December, second weekend.
They could meet, meet in town.
Second meeting in December.
Okay. So the, the development, or the, the owners' group also suggested that we take the, because of that, that we take the financing piece out of tonight's action? Are these linked?
Actually, the financing section is linked to the CFD formation. So I was planning on returning to council at CFD formation.
So that's really not part of our action this evening?
Well, the policies of the financing plan could be acted on with the understanding that I will have to update the finance, or I'll have to recommend and update the financing tables and to that section when the C, there are certain elements of the CFD are still being negotiated and structured. So I will have to come back and amend it. If you wanted to act on it, you could exclude it and just keep it draft. And then I would just come and amend it in at the time of CFD formation would be an option.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, first, let me be clear. I mean, our, our role is not to arbitrate between the city and the developers. We, we are the city, right? So I, I mean, I just want to be clear about what the issues that was, we're trying to get through them, that it's, I mean, staff has been executing the, and the issues that they've been raising and the negotiations have been, have been on our behalf. This is, I mean, although we're not involved in all the details, these aren't a surprise either. There, this set of stuff is important and the, the lack of absolute total flexibility is important for both us and for the developers. And so the references made earlier to what we did on the Fairfield project and, and that, that, and I think that what was said was that, well, we'll always have contingent reviews where we'll be able to make projects better. And in fact, that's precisely what this whole set of documents is intended to avoid, where if, if we adopt all of this and that we have clear standards that are certain, that are known to everyone, that have provisions for exceptions, but that are, that if you do what the standards and the guidelines and the requirements and the regulations all say, then you don't have to come to us. And so we, we shouldn't be envisioning that we will, that we, you know, ought to, you know, strip all the requirements out so that we can then have the projects all come to us one at a time. That's not conducive to an, to an effective development environment because nobody knows what approvals they will get until they come to the grace of the council at the last moment for, for approval. So that's why it is important that we get these right, that we get them economical, and that we get them in a way that achieves the vision that we're trying to, to implement for the, for the district. And so I think, you know, there's been, there's language in volume one about, you know, the application of certain provisions being, you know, aspirational or being, not about specific solutions. And that's intended to provide the important range of flexibility. And there are other aspects of the documents in volume two in particular that aren't so flexible. And for, and it's exactly for that reason, both for our benefit and for property owners to make decision, long-term decisions, knowing that they can make them with some certainty about what the future will look like. I, I'm very interested in the height issue. I'm not, I'm not prepared to just strip height restrictions out. I think the San Francisco example is actually a great one because there are different parts of the San Francisco urban environment, some of which don't match what we want to achieve. I, I actually don't want to see the financial district replicated throughout the Bridge District, right? Which is where you have the tallest buildings all close to each other. You do have some narrow streets, too. It does not create a vibrant, you know, pedestrian-oriented, open envi, intimate environment. It just creates really tall buildings that are always in the shade. There's no light. There's no sense of openness. That's not what we want, right? So there, there are consequences to having just, you know, an entire district that is all, you know, 50-story buildings. And the idea, and actually, San Francisco does have this, this, you know, the step-back policy. They don't allow a wall of very tall buildings right at the waterfront for exactly this reason. So I, to me, it's, it's not a question of just no height restrictions or, you know, very severe immutable ones. I'm definitely up for the conversation. I think there are reasons, particularly given what has happened with the, the, the flood easements, that we need to, you know, we need to take a look at what's possible in the, in the riverfront, in the, in the riverfront portion of the Bridge District. And, and the height issues, you know, throughout the district ought to be up, up for, up for, you know, up for review. But I think stripping them out altogether is not the right answer, that, that having, you know, a series of three, having a wall of 300-foot tall buildings on the waterfront creates a radically different environment in the interior of the Bridge District. That if we want that, then we ought to say that. I mean, we ought to explicitly look that, say that that's the, that's, you know, that's an option that we would be comfortable with. I, you know, just on first impression, I'm not. I would like to, to know more that about, you know, I'd like to have that conversation. So for me, the, the, the height issues are, should be on the table, but the, just strip out the, the limits altogether doesn't get there. And even the, the density piece, while I think it's, it's helpful because you can only put so much, I mean, you can't build an entire wall along the riverfront of 1,000-foot buildings, both because of the technology and because there's not enough units allowed or commercial square footage space. I don't want to overstate the case. But the, the building heights will determine in, in important ways what the district feels like, what it lives like. And so we ought to, you know, we're the biggest investor, not the property, not any individual property owner. We ought to have at least some role in constructing what the vision of that, of that looks like. On the step-back question, I think on the, you know, the, particularly the Ucker property, which, you know, I think we've all seen the, you know, how that would, how that would work or not, that's an area where the, where the step-backs that are outlined in the, in volume one, which I know we're taking out, but moving into volume, potentially into volume four, that doesn't work. So I don't, I don't know, I'm not prepared necessarily to make the, the logical leap that all step-backs ought to be removed. But for me, at least that, and I know this is an issue because, you know, particularly on that piece of property, they've got to make a decision about the covenants and all their participation, that it's, it's, it's central to their ability to develop at all. Some of the other parcels, you know, it might, it might, they might prefer one, one set of step-back requirements or another, but it may not be as essential. On that parcel, I'm prepared to say right now, I think it doesn't work to have the step-backs that are in, in the, on page 33. But by the same token, I'm not prepared to say just strip all step-backs out altogether because I do think that this question about urban form is an important one. So it ought to be, it ought to be an issue in the architectural standards as well as building heights that we work with the property owners over the next, you know, the coming weeks and, you know, hopefully not too many months as the, as the next logical step. But I don't, I'm, I wouldn't be comfortable, just as a policy matter today, saying no building heights and no step-backs at all. I don't think that's, I think that's a premature outcome for the hour of conversation that we've had about, about this, about tonight. And then I would like to see the development agreement, you know, done on, on an aggressive way in the way that, that Mr. Beers' line of questions led us to in terms of getting this to us. Obviously, it needs to be a development to come to us. It has to be one that, that has agreement on both sides. So I understand that it could be delayed, but I think it's in the interest of all parties to, to accelerate that as much as possible. And that will mean resolving the two other outstanding issues with respect to what happens if the 1C performance doesn't occur and, and what the reimbursement mechanisms look like for that. And I know there've been proposals on both sides. It doesn't appear to me like that is a, that like there, there's a gigantic chasm that can't possibly be breached. I, I, looking at that, I'm fairly confident that that's a solvable issue. And as is the state office, the issue, the contingent issue is if a state or other non-taxpaying user becomes a major... becomes a major part of the, of the district and it affects the financing plan, what's the, what happens next? So I, I think those are, you know, those are important issues, but they're definite, given what we have accomplished so far on a lot more complex stuff, those seem solvable in a short time, period of timeframe, given the goodwill that has already been put into play. Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, just some final comments. First of all, I'd like to thank staff and thank the development community for coming together really as, as quickly as they have. I know that there was a time when things were really moving along fairly well, and then, you know, they have a tendency to drag out and drag out, and the economy goes haywire, and they drag out even further, and a lot of different things happen because there are some important pieces of property that need to be either purchased, switched, or, and so I think that, you know, all of those kinds of things take time. But I think staff, you guys have done just, you've done a good job. You really do deserve some kudos, and so does the development community. They're getting ready to make some very, very large investments. They have made some investments, and so, I mean, I think it is, it's sort of a blending, if you will. As far as the height restrictions go, as I said earlier, I really am not one to impose height restrictions. I think that I would like to have the discussion as far as flexibility for the development community in, in, in heights restrictions or, and, or height requirements. The mayor is very persuasive, but I think we can be persuasive, too, to go a little bit higher, so. And then as far as the design guidelines go, I think one of the things that Wes was alluding to earlier was when we were talking about height restrictions, design guidelines, and different kinds of things, one of the things that I do remember in, gosh, I don't know what year it was, 93, something like that? 93 was the dome of the Capitol. As a matter of fact, it was a lady that lived on Park Boulevard that always used to really sort of talk to us about how that was important, and, but anyway. The design guidelines, for me, the important thing as far as the design guidelines are, number one, that there's some flexibility in the guidelines because I don't wanna have everything the same. And, I mean, we got burnt once on design guidelines and a housing, with a housing, with a group of houses that was constructed, and I don't want that to happen again. I don't want all the porches to face the same way, I don't want all the doors to face the same way, or I don't want all the garage doors to be the same and that sort of, I want some flexibility in there. And everything I've seen from the development community has all this flexibility in it. And at the same time, I think it is important that you have those lines of sight. We did a lot of work on that when we were designing the, in essence, the road structure or the grid structure, so that people in block 4, 5, 6, they still had the opportunity to, to see the river, to know exactly where they're going and headed and, and to get to that, what you wanna call it, that live space or whatever it was. So I think that, I think that, for me, those are the important things as far as the design guidelines go, and not everything is built with the same rock or, you know, and painted different colors or whatever it is. I mean, I think that there needs to be some flexibility in it, and that would be fairly important to me. I think a development agreement is something that should be coming forth as quickly as we can possibly get it, if, you know, it just, it's, the development agreements are always the ones that protect really both sides. And so I think it is important that we get that as quickly as possible. And one of the issues that I'll be looking at pretty closely, and that is, since in essence, this is a prevailing wage project, I'm gonna look at various project agreements. I'm gonna look at ways that we can put project agreements together, we can put some things together that, that take full advantage of prevailing wage, whether it be only West Sacramento companies, I just wanna make sure that we're gonna get the best product, I wanna make sure we get the highest quality, and those kinds of things. And, and I can put the people in the rooms together that, that can, in essence, sort of make that work. So it'll be something that I try to work on, so. But other than that, those are my comments.
Can I get a sense from, from staff, so, because the, the sequencing of what you're asking us to do tonight and 16th is a bit confusing. So we have before us recommendation to approve everything except the ordinances on the PD-41 text, the two ordinances on the PD-41 text, which would come back to us on the, on the, on the second or the 16th, but is that, and that's, is that what your recommendation is?
Yeah, we were, we were recommending that you approve the two resolutions and do first reading on the ordinances, and also approve the exception on the street naming policy. That is a topic we haven't discussed this evening, but that was one of our recommended actions.
Okay, but you're, are you also recommending that we approve the, all the SEQA issues and, and resolution 94, 948, which is the full specific plan?
That's correct. That is our recommendation tonight.
Okay, so given the, given the comments that have been made by members of the council at least up to this point, I mean, are we still, are they, are they consistent with one another enough and clear enough for staff that we could, we could adopt, that we could adopt resolution 09-48?
I believe so. I would like a little bit further clarification on the maximum building heights and the step-backs.
Well, the building heights, if we were to adopt this action, then as I understand it, we would be stripping the building height and step-back issues out of volume one altogether. We would be sending them to volume four, but volume four is not to be approved tonight. Volume four is to be worked on with the property owners for subsequent adoption, once we're done with all these other pieces. Is that, is that correct?
In the redline version that we provided tonight, we were actually proposing that they would move to volume two.
Volume two, okay, I'm sorry.
A new section, it's, it, there is a four in there. It's a new section 4.11 in volume two. That's if you chose to keep them in for the time being. If you chose to strip them out tonight, then they would just be deleted from volume one in its entirety. Or your other option could be to direct us to provide provision or put those into volume four, work them into volume four in some other fashion.
Okay, I mean, are they appropriate? Are height and step-back issues appropriate for four, or?
Yeah, they would be appropriate. I would say more appropriate in four than in volume two, because volume two is more about street scape in the public realm.
Right, and it also, yeah, okay, that makes sense, and, okay.
So I think everything else we're clear on.
All right, so we wouldn't be, you wouldn't be, we wouldn't then be resolving the height and step-back issue. Although I do wanna say that on the, I think I've heard on the Unger piece that there's pretty broad, a pretty broad understanding of the challenges that if we just migrated it, the language directly, that it wouldn't work, and that we're committed to making it work. So I mean, although we're not gonna adopt a volume four by the 15th or the 16th, I do think it's important for that message to be clear, that we understand that we're gonna, that is an issue that I think is, you know, being ID'd for a resolution. But rather than try to go through all the building height and step-back issues tonight and try to solve them, it'd be in volume four. Because I agree, actually, with Mr. Kristof, there are gonna, that, you know, having a single or one, or a couple of, you know, super tall buildings on the waterfront doesn't create the problems that I was describing. So I'm not, I'm not trying to create an environment that, that, you know, that, you know, creates this very artificial notion that everything's gonna be in the core, and it's all gonna step back in some sort of, you know, you know, very methodical way. So I do think there's, there's a lot of room to figure out how to, how to translate this into something that works and that is flexible enough and that may, and that would provide for additional height flexibility, just not, just not total, a total Wild West as an approach. But we can, but we have time to resolve that, and we would be able to have the benefit of, of more robust property owner involvement than if we tried to do it all tonight.
Yes.
So if we, so, but the, is that the only issue on one, two, and three that, that you would flag that you, that you didn't have clarity or consistency from the council?
I think so. The, it seemed like we had very good clarity on the architectural guidelines, though that policy is to remain in, but you've given us enough direction on that it needs to be flexible, and, and now you've highlighted some things that we need to try to incorporate into those and work with the property owners.
So with regard to the financing component of volume three, is that gonna be kept draft at this point? Is that?
Yes, that would be the intent. There's placeholders in there now, but as a part of the record of this meeting, it's clear that the intent at adoption, if you were to adopt tonight, would be, that would be draft and then would be updated once this, we have more final documentation on the CFD.
Right, okay.
And the advantage of doing as much as we can tonight is that, at least as I understand it, the discussions about the development agreement, to some extent, at least are contingent on us having a specific plan. And so to the extent to which we can do the specific plan, at least volumes one, two, and three this evening, that makes it more possible to, to complete work on the development agreement, is that, is that correct?
That would be correct. It would address a lot of the issues that we've been struggling over.
Okay, I know there's still more council discussion, but I just wanted to check in on process.
Okay. I did wanna mention before I leave here, Mr. Harrington did ask...
Is it the one that's been darting back and forth all around the room for the last 20 minutes?
He did ask if you would entertain opening the public hearing so he could clarify a statement on behalf of the property owners, and I believe it's regarding design guidelines? Never mind? Okay, never mind.
Okay, all right. Mr. Johansson, thank you.
Yeah, I hate to belabor the development agreement point, but what would stop us then from going to the first planning commission in December with a development agreement, and then to the second council meeting to review that?
The first meeting in the, for the planning commission has already been noticed, so we didn't make the public notice.
What's the notice period on that? On December 1st in December?
Probably two weeks prior, but I'd have to go and look it up.
Yeah, it's two weeks prior. And then notice has already gone out because of the holidays.
So it's because of notice we can't do it?
Plus, the other issue, Councilman Johansson, is that the staff report for that meeting needs to go out on Monday. I don't think we'll have the development agreement drafted and ready to go out by Monday.
Oh, ye little faith. If we just stay here all night tonight in the spirit of goodwill and commitment, we'll just get it done. Okay, thank you.
But we will expedite as much as possible.
Your motion? May I approach Mr. Beers?
Well, I'll give, I'll give this a little bit of a try. I would like to move that we adopt resolution 0984 approving SEQA findings, a fact statement of overriding considerations in the mitigation monitoring reporting plan, adopt resolution 948 providing amendments to the bridge district specific plan, but in this component, then that needs to reflect tonight's comments from the council that we just went over with, with Charlene regarding the various elements of, first of all, some of this language needs to be finalized, consistent with, with the discussion tonight.
Mr. Beers, if I might suggest, if you look down to item eight on the recommended action, I think that would be an appropriate place to add something.
Okay, all right, I just, yeah, I, all right, fine. Way first reading and read by title only ordinance 0912 thereby repealing and reenacting the planned development number 41 text. Way first reading and read by title only ordinance 0913 thereby rezoning 1501 and 2002 0081 South River Road from waterfront to waterfront slash planned development number 41. Approve the recommended street names to the bridge district, including deviation from street naming policy to allow all streets except Ballpark Drive, Ironworks Avenue, and other streets within Ironworks to have the Suffolk Street. Authorize and direct city manager to update the technical data contained in the appendix volumes three of the bridge district specific plan as needed to ensure the information set forth there and reflects the best information available to the city. Provide those revisions are consistent with the vision and intent of volumes one, two, and three of the specific plan, and do not materially alternate, alter the financing assumptions for conclusions contained therein. All such revisions shall be appealable as provided in section 3.3, 6.8 of the volume one of specific plan. And then direct staff to prepare the final version of specific plans volume one, two, and three in light of tonight's comments from the council, and also direct staff to work toward coming together with the development agreement, draft development agreement as soon as possible. I don't think there was any other issues. Inform the audience, the second reading of ordinances 0912 and 0913 is tentatively scheduled for...
December 16th.
Pardon me?
December 16th.
December 16th, 2009.
Question to the motion. All right, Mr. Kristof. Under Wes's motion and under number seven, where it says "specific plan and do not materially alter the financing assumption conclusions therein," is that in reference to the tax increment that will be generated from the project? For not the Class A kinds of development that are, that is set aside for?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Under section seven of what Wes's motion is, number seven, it says volumes one, two, and three of the specific, of the specific plan, and do not materially alter the financing assumption conclusions contained therein. Does that, in essence, then set all of the tax increment back into funding things that the project originally does not fund? Does that, set that in stone?
Yes, it establishes the, well, the actual financing section now you're taking as, you're keeping it draft. So, but the technical appendices are the support, are the scope and the actual costs and sources, but the policy that commits the tax increment is in the financing chapter itself. And yes, it does establish that commitment.
And that will come in section four?
The, that policy is in section seven of volume three.
Oh, okay.
If I might, Katie...
But that's gonna come back.
That item was also intended on a sort of a going-forward basis to allow the city manager to make updates to the, to the truly, the technical components of the appendices without having to go through the entire plan amendment process.
Okay.
That was the original, one of the original intentions of that particular provision.
No, second Wes's motion.
All right, it's been moved in second, or is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, thanks to the staff, and thanks to the property owners and other stakeholders for all the work.
You know, that's really a big deal. I mean, this is a huge thing. This is a big, big deal. Boy, it's a big deal. The bee should be here, everybody and their brother should be here for that one.
The bee?
Yeah.
Well, the waterfront zone does, would allow for a medical marijuana dispensary. I don't think we'd let them know, but...
That would've got somebody here.
All right, item eight is workshop to discuss the draft restaurant retention and attraction strategy. Mr. Luken?
Good evening, Mayor Cobaldin and members of the council. Considering the late hour, I would like to ask if the council would like to move ahead with the presentation, or if you would like to skip the presentation and go right to questions and answers? We do have our... We do have our consultant team here.
I think that, I mean, this is an important item. It's generated a lot of community interest, so I, I think we ought to proceed as briefly as we can, but with the, with the presentation.
Thank you, sir. We will do that then. Staff is here to introduce our topic tonight and also to introduce our economic consultant, Andy Plecia with A Plecia Company. And Mr. Plecia has retained Tom Minor, a principal with Technomic, which is a national food service industry consultant, consulting firm. Mr. Minor is a principal of that firm and project manager for this assignment. Mr. Plecia has over 37 years of economic development and redevelopment experience and is well-known in the, in the area. Most relevant to this work, however, is his work in development of restaurants such as Luca, Pyramid Brewery, PF Chang, and McCoonies. We'd like to just highlight key findings for you this evening in a short PowerPoint presentation and following which staff would like to receive your comments and direction regarding the strategy and the report. Okay, and I will need the. The initial grant application was to answer the question, you know, why wasn't the city capturing more restaurants while we had this extensive retail expansion underway in the past few years? And in particular, why weren't we capturing them in the West Capital and Central Business District and Washington areas? Staff hope to learn how to effectively attract full-service restaurants as well as overcome the perception and market data and to develop a strategy and a suite of tools to attract new operators and also help our existing restaurants to expand and thrive. The, the purpose, obviously, during the process, whoops, wait a minute, sorry. I've gone through the purpose and the background, the market and industry assessment, these are the four components of the strategy. Essentially to do the market assessment, do an industry assessment with our consultant and look at locations for where restaurants could be located in, in the near term as well as the long term. And also to look at policy, financial, regulatory constraints that the city might have that were obstacles to restaurant attraction and growth. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, now I have. Next slide, please. The study area, just to remind the council, is a very narrow-focused area, the West Capital Avenue area, the Central Business District, and the Washington Plan area. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tom Minor now to provide the findings and conclusions from the market assessment as well as the industry assessment of our existing restaurants.
Thank you, Diane. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for spending the time with us this evening. I know it's very late. We'll, we'll push forward and, and try to get our story across as succinctly as we can. Just a recap of our findings and then we'll talk about some of the recommendations we have in mind. In general, we, we find that the city of West Sacramento is in a very classic situation wherein over the last few decades or maybe even more, the city has grown up around itself. The traffic is built in a, and commerce is built in a beltway around the, what used to be the core of the city, what we call the downtown area. Very classic situation, it happens in, in many older cities in the, in the country. Question is, how do we revitalize and contemporize the use within this band of the study area? In particular, how can restaurants be vital to this area? That's our general consensus of what the, the main issues are. And we look then at some of the key elements within the area to understand what is going to be salient to understanding a strategy for reversing or moving forward to grow this area. The regional economic situation is well-known. Recession aside, the next 12 to 18 months are going to be a kind of a, a nonplussed period when restaurant development is going to be very slim because of the lack of financing and the lack of ability, a lack of operators to generate funds for growth. Within the region, we find that the economy is pretty stable. However, household incomes are, are flat and even dropping and unemployment is, is rising. This is a given. However, overall, the consumer profile, in other words, the demographics of the area are very positive, particularly in the West Sacramento area where there's been solid growth in the double digits. We see that proceeding. And so we looked at, at the, at the, the numbers about five years in advance to 2014, excuse me, when we have substantial growth in the number of households and moderate growth in the average household income. In particular, this, this consumer profile shows softening of some of the tougher aspects of the, their spending behavior. One of the stark comparisons that we noticed is that spending per capita in restaurants in West Sacramento, of the West Sacramento population is about $250 per year. In greater Sacramento, that figures about $1,500. For the state of California, it's about $1,700. So in West Sacramento, our population per person, and this is a metric, obviously, there's people coming in and going out, but this, this measure tells us that we're spending as a population about one-sixth of the average of the greater Sacramento area. Why is that? We need to understand why in order to develop a solid restaurant strategy to move forward.
So do you know, you're going to tell us the answer to that?
A strategy for moving forward, yes, sir.
Well, no, but for that, for that metric, are you?
Why is it so low?
Right.
Yes, okay, I'll, I'll be happy to address that, yes. And we cover that in the report and then.
Okay.
One, one quick question, though. Is that West Sacramento spending in West Sacramento, West Sacramento's going across the river and spending?
It's, it's, there's no way to calculate that and that's, that's not what we're trying to calculate with that metric. What we are doing is comparing apples to apples that says the individual, the, where we take the, the full amount of restaurant spending in a city and divide it by the capita. So in this case, we've got about $11 million of restaurant spending in '08, divided that by about 48,000 population, and we get $250 approximately. The full table for the whole state is in the report. On average, we're looking at about $1,500 in greater Sacramento. So the point is that we're, our people are spending less money, first, that's part of the, the answer.
You know, I, I guess I, that's part of the, the reason I wanted to interrupt you here is I, I don't understand how we use that because the fact is there aren't enough restaurants in the city for people to spend. I mean, if I want to go out, I go out. So it's not that our people aren't necessarily spending money on restaurants, but they don't have the choices here.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I totally agree. And moreover, I'll say that we have very specific reasons as to why they're not, why those restaurants aren't drawing individuals and why they're not here and which ones we need to have.
Okay.
Okay? So that's part of our strategy for moving forward and getting the individuals in the, in this community to spend $1,500 a year in the community, and in the meantime, to your point, bringing folks from across the river here, just as we know we're going over to Sacramento to spend.
Okay.
So that's the consumer issues in a nutshell. Competitive analysis, talking about the restaurants that are here. We have about 95 restaurants in West Sacramento. Most of them are either fast food or some kind of a quick service format. We have some family dining restaurants, which, which mean table service but no bar. There's very few casual dining restaurants, which is a, a term that means full table service with a bar. Applebee's would be a good, good example of that. Olive Garden, some of the Mexican restaurants with bars, et cetera. So we have fewer of the high-ticket casual dining, no fine dining restaurants. And typically, those are the restaurants where the average check, average transaction runs to 20, $25 per, per transaction, whereas the restaurants we have have transactions of about $5 to $10. The restaurants in Sacramento average $112, $115,000 per year in sales. The restaurants in greater Sacramento area average about $715,000 in sales. A typical casual dining restaurant will average in excess of a million or $2 million a year. So by not having those larger restaurants with more diversified menus, established brand names that have the drawing power, we're losing the ability to hold, we, we have lost the ability to hold our customers in our area and moreover to bring, we've lost the ability to bring the Sacramento residents over for a quick lunch. So those are some of the aspects that we identified. In addition, we conducted over 15 one-on-one interviews with individuals within the area who are in the industry, the restaurant industry in one capacity or another, real estate, operators and owners, et cetera, to get their insight. So those have been incorporated into our findings and the report. Yes, sir?
The other question I have is, there's a lot of people that work here that don't live here. Are they included in your, your numbers at all or what's the impact of, of them? So Sturgis came in with, you know, almost 1,000 new people. How, how does that impact our?
Well, how, how it impacts that metric, and this is just one of the metrics we use, is that those people are part of the $11 million expenditures.
So when you did the per capita, though, it was including employees as well as residents?
No, we use the, their spending is incorporated in that $11 million that of food service spending in West Sacramento. The capita is the city population.
Right.
Okay? So that, that capita is not included in there. That would be a different calculation and just as valuable. It's very difficult to get at that, however. And we did, in fact, do what we call a daypart analysis of the demographics, which means that we identified how many employees or how many people were in the West Sacramento trade area at lunch.
Okay.
All right? And how many overnight. So we looked at those two populations, what their demographics were, what their spending was, to get a sense for that.
Okay.
That information, however, is not available for every city in the state. So this metric on spending per capita tells us how West Sacramento is doing in terms of drawing and holding customers and getting them to spend money on restaurants here. So those were our basic findings, and when I say basic, I, I mean that literally because in fact we. There it goes. The report's about 60 pages long. We have general recommendations and then a phased report, which I'll move into quickly. First of all, restaurants don't exist without people, commerce, traffic, so we need to continue building the residential and business population base. Obviously, that's exactly what you're doing. But it's important for us to say that upfront that without that kind of base being built in to the areas as we phase the, the build-out of the restaurant strategy, it's not going to work. We need an early focus on retaining the existing restaurants. We, we've already got $11 million worth of restaurant sales. We can't turn our back on our base business. We've got to guard and protect them, bring them up, help them to make more money per unit to attract more customers by doing a better job. That'll help us to attract more and bigger and better restaurants. We need to take our trade area and, and take it apart geographically and build anchors within, within it to stabilize the trade area along the West Capitol corridor, up into the river and, and over into Washington, just in the same way that you anchor a shopping center. And that's the way we'll look at this kind of geography. And the next slide is a, a map and I'll show you how we're taking that apart. And then finally, to pursue strategically restaurant opportunities in the existing building stock that's available. We're looking at a four-phase development of this strategy development in that we build anchors based, in a phased format, based on the existing traffic, the existing restaurant community in these micro areas within the target study areas and then producing a backfill within that. So for instance, the, the first point that we rec, suggest or recommend we develop through is the corner of, around the Harbor Boulevard, West Capitol Avenue, and Business 80. Why? Because it already has a vibrant community, there's a great commerce area, a lot of lunch traffic there, and it's central to a lot of residential. So there's an ability there for us to bring in one or two casual dining restaurants and, and make that already busy area the beginning of, of the, the end of the West Capitol development. Secondly, to move into the riverfront area and either by Rayleigh Field, along the West Capitol Avenue, down the hill, and perhaps along the river by the, the site of the new planned hotel, to add restaurants in that area. Third, to develop the Washington neighborhood, not particularly with casual dining restaurants, but to, there's an opportunity to do different kinds of developments there. And then fourth, that, the corner of the West Cap, or the area of the West Capitol Avenue, Jefferson Boulevard, and Business 80. Thank you. So the first area is down here. There's a cluster of restaurants already, a lot of commerce and good traffic. We have the access from 80. And so because of the advanced development of the restaurant trade area there, we recommend that we continue to work, oh geez, could you pop that up for me? Thank you. We recommend that we start at that area first. Then the second area, by the bridge, where we have some development already and plans for more. In addition, we have the access or proximity to the Sacramento downtown group and also some folks that may come over from the evenings, it's, it's accessible. We also have the business towers there along that strip. Third, the Washington neighborhood, perhaps now not a great restaurant trade area, but it's a great residential area. It's got a lot of character and it's going to be an important part of the growth of the city in terms of residential and, and it could be exciting in terms of the restaurant development. And finally, even though the, the corner of the area around Jefferson and 80 and the West Capitol is probably the hub and core of the downtown area, because of the, the lack of traffic there now and some of the difficulties with the interstate going through there, the Business 80, that needs to be built up a little bit more with, more resident or businesses before we recommend that that be tackled. So we're looking at grabbing the low-hanging fruit. In the West Capitol, Harbor Boulevard, we'd recommend one to two additional casual dining restaurants. Keep in mind that these are going to generate between $1 and $2 million each. I think that restaurants that are going to be interested are, are going to be from restaurant groups that aren't already heavily supplied within your area, such as sports pubs. Good example, that would be Buffalo Wild Wings. Average check about $12 to $15, great 20 to 30-year-old concept in terms of the, the demographic of the, of the customers. A family steakhouse like Longhorn or, or Texas Roadhouse. A cafeteria buffet or a steak buffet like Golden Corral would also work well in that In the riverfront, Rayleigh Field, West Capitol Avenue area, we need more of a destination restaurant feel, meaning that in terms of restaurant concepts, we want average checks to be a little bit more pricey in the range of $15 to $25, still a good value in keeping with the, the greater demographic of our city. A casual dining steakhouse could be something like, again, a Texas Roadhouse or something a little more upscale, perhaps like an Outback, but certainly not a Sullivan's or a Fleming's. We're not talking about fine dining or expensive dining. This has to be very. dining. This has to be very mass-market oriented, as accessible to people buy it in ways that it's very casual and affordable. A casual dining seafood concept could be an independent, could be something on a, in a more varied menu type. And then finally, a casual dining varied menu, TGI Friday's, Applebee's are good examples, and there's many also from your local market. In the Washington neighborhood area, we recommend that you create a farmer's market there. A couple of reasons for that. It was, it would serve as a regional distribution center for local artisans to sell their produce, to sell their products that are food-based, and would create the local organic and natural garden spaces that are part of the heritage of that area, and incorporate not only a strong food culture, but would allow for some smaller restaurants there as well. I think that that kind of approach would be in keeping with what the character of the neighborhood is and allow diversity within West Sacramento totally that is, would be unique and holding with the history of the community. And then finally, in the West Capitol Jefferson Boulevard area, there is a thriving on West Sacramento standards restaurant community in that area, some great little restaurants. It could benefit with two or three casual dining restaurants there. And those could be some of the more popular concepts, like a Mexican casual dining restaurant, an Italian casual dining restaurant, or again, a varied menu restaurant. So we're talking about BJ's or it could be Cattlemen's, something like Red Robin. In addition to specific restaurant elements, we have recommended some market development steps. One is that we build restaurant operator awareness, the restaurant operators here in West Sacramento regarding the guest experience and how they can do better at serving their customer base, so that they're more competitive in this market and more competitive against not only the existing restaurants in Sacramento, but the new competitors that may come into this market because of this plan and your work. That we do build a local restaurant organization, collaborative, to do collaborative marketing, to help each other, to grow the West Sacramento restaurant area. That we build a local food culture so that the population appreciates food in a different way and perhaps understands more about dining and some of the fun aspects of it. That goes in part with the whole farmer's market, local produce, et cetera. And use media to promote food culture awareness, encourage relocation of existing restaurants. So for instance, some of our more popular, successful restaurants could benefit by moving into the direct line of our strategy, and that would solve two issues for us. One is, would put a viable competitor, restaurant supplier, in one of our target areas, and remove one of the smaller, less competitive restaurants in the market. And finally, then sponsor local community events and certainly include local restaurants in those. And we have many examples of what that could be as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Andy Plesha. Let's talk just briefly about the draft strategy sets forth a whole series of implementation actions. And the idea is to kind of identify the things that could be done over the next five-year period to implement the kind of recommendations that Tom has described for you this evening. The document before you takes about two dozen action items and places them into a matrix and into these categories here, recognizing that all of these things cannot be done initially. There are obviously some economic as well as financial constraints right now in terms of what can be accomplished. But just to give you a few examples, not to go through each one of these, but in terms of, for instance, physical environment, one of the things that we heard in the context of our analysis and assessment was a need to really kind of improve the key entryways into the city and really improve the sense of arrival. And to do that, there's a suggestion here in continuing your program and trying to improve the gateways, entryways with landscaping, signage, wayfinding signage, and also to improve the physical appearance of a lot of the buildings that you first see as you're in here in the city at these various entry points. Another example, financial and regulatory incentives. Sewer credits, as an example, are a very important commodity for restaurant development. You have a resource right now available to you. We're suggesting you consider at least allocating a large portion of that reserved for restaurant food industry-type uses who could take advantage of that. It would help the underlying economics in terms of trying to develop either new space, or as Tom talked about, second-generation or adaptive reuse space. In either case, it would really provide a benefit in terms of, again, the development economics of a new space for restaurant food use. And then lastly, as an example, under revitalization and redevelopment, we'd suggest that you consider a facade program to improve existing buildings. You have a number of very good restaurants that are not in the most ideal building conditions or situations. And how do we improve the curb appeal of those? And again, dealing with existing spots that could be improved to do that. A lot of jurisdictions have done that, and we're suggesting at least that be a consideration on the table in terms of available funding to do that through your redevelopment function here at the city. Obviously, you can't do this alone, and most successful programs are done in collaboration. This slide is just intended to kind of outline for you a number of possible institutional partners that you would join with to try and accomplish these, a number of which you're already working with on various issues. Also, the private sector would be involved very heavily in this. We've actually spent some time with some of these folks listed on this slide, including the Chamber and the Small Business Development Center, who've at least initially expressed an interest in working with you and trying to undertake and complete a lot of the recommendations and implementation actions that we've presented to you this evening. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Diane Richards, who's going to wrap up the presentation. They'll be happy to answer your questions.
Do you have any questions for our consultants before we conclude this portion?
Why don't we finish the whole presentation then?
Okay. One of the things that we heard from restaurant operators, you know, what could the city do? And several of those things included, as Andy mentioned, improving the appearance of some of the buildings and some of the areas near their locations. Another thing that was mentioned was events and marketing and promotion to bring people into the city that will patronize, that will patronize restaurants more, to have events, gatherings, to support local restaurants, using them at all local affairs, all events in the gallery, et cetera, et cetera. We know that our restaurants need assistance in the form of, for example, PG&E assistance. Restaurants generally have extremely high-power bills, and so that's another area that we can use the business response team. PG&E is on our business response team. That's a team that's already in place with the Chamber and city staff. Another example of ways that we can help restaurants improve their operations, maximize their revenue, reduce their expenses, to help them generate more revenue and increase their restaurant sales and revenue. We are not, one of the other observations from this analysis is that we're not marketing our restaurants to our own citizens enough. And the restaurants aren't doing that as well. They're looking for ideas. They're looking for ways and opportunities to do that. Many of our own citizens don't even know about the restaurants that are north of the freeway, for example. You know, we have this restaurant guide that we've produced for years, and we try to send that out everywhere we can. We have it on the website, but it's not enough. And it's not, and the city cannot do this on our own. We need other partners. We're not experts at marketing. There are others that are, and certainly the Chamber. The Small Business Development Center is willing to assist, and they're interested in helping midsize and smaller and medium-sized businesses. So this is another opportunity. We need to continue the code enforcement and ACE actions. We've got to continue to improve the look of this particular area because it sends a message of disinvestment to others that are considering investment. I must, I must say, however, that with the investment of the new structures out here, the community center, the college, businesses in the area are excited about that. There are several restaurants that have contacted us that are interested in expanding and interested in assistance from the city to understand about the new visitors and the new students that are going to be coming here. So the actions that we've taken already are the right step, and we're going to continue to build that employment base. We're going to continue to build the population base, but that's going to take time. So events, marketing, promotion, business technical assistance, improving the curb appeal, addressing the physical environmental issues that we can, and also realizing that we're in an economy right now that restaurants are not interested in taking unnecessary risks. They simply can't. The restaurants that are here, the majority of them are hanging on and surviving and doing everything they can to ride this out. Additionally, we've been advised by other market experts that there are 50 restaurant pads available within a 10-mile radius that have either been vacated by existing restaurants or being marketed heavily with incentives from developers and other property owners. So that's staring us in the face. We too have existing restaurant pads, and that's one of our strategies, is to market those existing restaurant facilities. Kitchens are expensive to build, $100 a foot or more, not counting city fees. So this is an area that is not available to us initially. We don't have the subsidies. There is not financing out there for new restaurants, by and large, especially locals and independents. The national chains, and that's why the strategy recommends national chains, regional chains, chains that have their own financing vehicles or have a lot of investment capital that don't need to rely on conventional bank financing. So that's essentially the summary of the strategy. There's some other little things that staff can do and is doing, Adopt-A-Road, restaurant guides, lots of things like that. Most of them are staff actions.
Okay. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, did, I know when we, this first came up, there was a suggestion to talk to the California Real Estate, a real California Restaurant Association. Did that happen?
Yes, it did. Our consultants interviewed a member of the California Restaurant Association, and that information was summarized in this report.
Yeah, because I know, for example, they have an interest in organizing restaurants. You know, of course, as part of the membership, they could help out there. But you know, my conversation with them, you know, of course, the demographics and a lot of the economic analysis are probably going to be done by the bigger restaurant chains that can kind of, you know, weed through this information. But then you've got the whole group of restaurants that basically people are buying jobs. You know, the small mom-and-pops setting up a breakfast shop, sandwich shop, dinners, you know, whatever. But that, it's not, so it's more, I really think this image is a big issue. And I'm glad that you brought that up because my conversation with the people over there was basically along that line, that yes, you could bring in, come into West Sacramento, but there is still the issue of, you know, coming off the freeway, you know, you've got to start looking nicer. We're doing, you know, some of that off of the, off the I Street Bridge now with the gateway coming in there that we're going to be putting in or that's being put in. But I think that image thing is an issue. I mean, aside from the economics we're talking about, it's something that, you know, we've all talked about here as far as revitalization, revitalization of West Capitol Avenue. But it's something that we probably should really look at. You know, how do we spruce up these areas? What can we do to do that? Some type of incentive to do that because I think you're right, that you've got a restaurant that's a decent restaurant, but it's kind of in a shoddy area. And that kind of detracts from the whole restaurant experience.
Thank you.
Mr. Kristof? Diane, I think you touched on it earlier. Recently, we lost a fairly successful restaurant. As a matter of fact, the city bought the property at Baker Square. And is there any, I mean, can we put enough incentives together that would make that restaurant viable? I mean, can we make it, in essence, cheap enough to get into? I mean, they have a lot of amenities already there. And it's really interesting because that whole area in there, they need a place to go eat. And they used to go to Baker Square all the time. And so there's a built-in, there's a built-in customer base. And I was just wondering, is there a way, are we prohibited from, we'll say, selling the land, you know, ridiculously cheap so that, you know, a decent restaurant could go in there? Or are there any restrictions that are upon us? Or can we just try to market that to, let's say, a Black Bear Restaurant? Because I've gone to a few of those, you know, throughout the state. And it seems like it's something that would go very well within that, that customer base. And at the same time, it's right off the freeway. And I know that the new freeway alignment is probably going to follow it up a little bit, but I mean, if you can make it cheap enough to get into, will they get into it? Or will they just say, no, we're, that's, we're not ready?
I would like to invite Tom Minor up to address what he, and I will answer it also, but I want him to address what the strategy is in that area because what we do with Baker Square affects what can happen at the intersection there at West Cap and Harbor.
Absolutely right.
And so, and of course, I must tell you that we are coordinating with the redevelopment staff that are working on the Baker Square, and there is still time for proposals to come in, and we're still looking at those. One of the strategies is to look possibly for an existing operator that's successful that would like to expand, and thereby capturing that space, taking advantage of that space, and helping one of our existing restaurants to grow and increase their volume and their revenue, so on and so forth, consistent with what Mr. Minor referred to earlier. So, and then also vacating another smaller restaurant space that makes room for another new restaurant in town. It's not necessarily about making it cheap enough or incenting it enough to get the best operator because depending on the type of operator that you get, you know, if we are able to get a national, for example, they're not going to be so much interested in getting it cheap and getting incentives as they are in making sure they can do the volume. And, you know, they can do the volume there and that they'll get their numbers. They have more financing available to them.
So, so the name itself, if it is a national name or a statewide name, that, isn't that a draw unto itself?
Yes. And they're generally drawn more to high-visibility, high-traffic areas, as we mentioned earlier. This is a-
Would Harbor Boulevard be that kind of a site?
Yes.
Well, then I would rather, instead of having somebody expand out, I'd rather bring in one of the new national or statewide chains, if you will, that can, in essence, capture not only the environment around that particular location, but they can bring in people from going down Interstate 80, heading into Sacramento-Davis, wherever they're going. Okay.
Did you have anything to add to that?
Yes.
We've discussed Baker Square quite extensively, and I don't-
Mr. Kristof, the process that the restaurateurs, and you're right, that the larger the chain, the more color overlay charts, you know, that gets pretty wild. But even a local chain is going to do some kind of a demographic analysis of a one-mile, three-mile radius. And so that's the first thing they're going to do. They want to know that their customers are there or driving by. There are a lot of restaurants that use sites that are easily accessible to an interstate. Cracker Barrel only does that. So, yeah, that, that kind of restaurant is out there. Some of the, so they will, if their restaurant customer demographics fit that site, then they'll take a look at it. And they're not going to be interested if it's cheap unless it fits first. And the whole strategic thing that Diane mentioned is something that I brought up, and that is that the Baker Square location is on the wrong side of the interstate.
I know.
And if we think that, okay, we're at $11 million now, and we want to raise it $2 million, that's 20% hike, that's pretty good. That's two restaurants. And if we think that we can get one or even two restaurants at Harbor, by taking Baker Square and putting in a restaurant there, we may nix our chances to get a $2 million unit over by Harbor. You see what I mean?
No, I understand.
We're dividing the trade area up into another parcel with a weak site. We're dividing the trade area up into another parcel with a weak site. So it's dangerous. We need to have, there are, there will be a restaurant that thinks that site is great. It may not be right now because a lot of the restaurants that are especially in family dining are sitting on their cards.
I know. Okay.
I hope that answered it.
For me, I mean, this is a useful analysis and report and the strategy is, seems smart. I mean, we, we, and particularly our constituents, and your surveying has only strengthened this notion even more, the idea that the city just picks a location, zones it, provides a few incentives, and then that restaurant arrives, that we have that degree of power. So we've asked everybody, what restaurants do you want? And they have responded and now they're wondering why we haven't done it. And it doesn't work that way, all right? I mean, we have very little direct ability to drive the development of the kind of restaurants that we want. We have some, but we shouldn't obsess too much about our direct tools, which are essentially zoning and the ability that we used to have, that we don't really, to provide much incentives. We can't, an incentive-based strategy isn't really, it can't be the core of what we're trying to accomplish. We have to be, our power is to influence the market, to make a restaurant successful in the first place. And I really like the cluster approach that the strategy identifies because it is difficult for individual, single restaurants all by themselves to create the sort of market pull that's necessary. I mean, you go to, and I'll, and the comments I'm going to make, I'm going to reference Midtown a lot. But you go to Midtown to eat at sort of, at that, you know, for that sort of fine dining experience, but there are casual dining experiences there as well. But you can go knowing that, okay, if you don't get in at Zoclo, you can go across the street to Pizano's and if they don't have a seat, you can go to Drag, I mean, there's, there is, or you could say, let's just meet there and we'll figure out where we're going to eat once we arrive. We can go have food there, then we'll go get dessert down the street at Rick's. I mean, there's, the different restaurants in a way complement each other so that the market works much more effectively. And so it is a challenge today where, you know, Sal's is all out by itself and then the Pheasant Club used to be all out by itself. We don't have these, these fully developed clusters of restaurants that have different characters and different identities. So as we talk about chains, I think, you know, there is a lot of interest in chain restaurants and I'm supportive of, you know, the work to try to attract them for some of the reasons that have been mentioned. I'm not interested in having every quadrant of the city populated by chain restaurants. And again, this is a good Midtown example. It would have been a travesty had the city of Sacramento ended up populating Midtown with Chili's and Applebee's and TGI Fridays and have them suck the oxygen out of the market for what has developed into, you know, really one of the state's premier restaurant districts, which, you know, has a PF Chang's, but, you know, it's principally local and regional things that give the place some distinction. So it's not, I mean, if you want a community that's entirely chain-based restaurants, you can go to parts of Placer, El Grove, or parts of Natomas to get that experience. But you don't remember it. I mean, you're not going, when you leave, it's not like, wow, I just had dinner in El Grove, it's, I had dinner at Applebee's, which looks just like the Applebee's everywhere else. So they're important because of the brand draw, because of their financial position and because, just like at Starbucks, people like them because they know, including our own residents, they know what they're going to get because they've been there before and they've been there somewhere else. So there's definitely an important role for them to play. And places like Riverpoint and the highway locations are really ideal. To some extent, some of the suburban locations in the, in the commercial center of Southport maybe as well. But I personally wouldn't consider it a big success to have West Capital Avenue, although it would be definitely, it would be an improvement. It would, I think, in the long run, preclude the development of organic, local, unique restaurants that bring character to our downtown, that make it somewhere that is distinctive. So for me, I want, there are nuances to the clusters that I think we ought to pay attention to and a chain, a chain strategy shouldn't be one that we apply everywhere throughout the city. I do, I mean, I absolutely agree that our local residents don't know what's out there. In part, it is just information, you know, I know folks have been organizing pub crawls and restaurant crawls and what have you, and they've been hugely popular because people want to stay closer to home, they want to discover these unique places, and when they find them, they're thrilled with them. You know, folks who live in Southport who discover Sal's love it. It's just as good as Ernesto's, it's just not as pretty. Well, actually, it is as pretty because the tile mosaics are actually much nicer, you know, they give it a lot of character, but it doesn't have the, it doesn't have the same fine dining, you know, sort of notion to it. But the food's just as good and once you discover that it's there, and it's, you know, when we're all asked, well, where's there to go eat? And you say, well, there's this, you know, great Alausian restaurant, but it's, you know, it's in this little kind of strip shopping center, you've got to go pass an accountant and a florist or whatever to get there. It's the last place you would expect, but once you find it, you'll really, really love it. Or even at its old location, drive down West Capital Avenue and as soon as you find a building that you would never think you would want to go into to eat at a restaurant, that's the one. Those are great for, you know, building the sense that I know the secrets of West Sacramento, but they're not great for building a successful restaurant market. So the notion about focusing on issues around finding curb appeal, both in terms of improvements but also clustering these locations that create places where you can say, yeah, just go, you know, if you go up to West Cap and Jefferson, there's a whole bunch of restaurants, you'll find something to eat, right? That's, and it'll be good. I mean, that's the kind of outcome that you want to have and we don't have that and we're not even close to that today. But that depends on the sort of planning decisions that we've been making around, you know, building the residential and the employment markets right around those locations for these clusters to be successful. And then the substantial improvements in things like the streetscape because you couldn't put a cluster of fine dining restaurants or even good casual dining restaurants on West Capital Avenue a year ago because it's not the sort of place that you would walk from restaurant to restaurant because you're crossing a freeway constantly to do it. So I think this, you know, we need to remember that our principal restaurant attraction and support strategy is our West Capital specific plan, it's our, it's the Bridge District specific plan, it's our general plan, it's all the other investments and planning choices that we made that are trying to create these, you know, concentrated areas of, you know, vibrancy and character and place that have people and employees around them to be able to create the market demand for, not just restaurants, but for shops and everything else that create the kind of commercial environment that we want. But, so this strategy, I think, makes sense in that it's modest. It doesn't purport to, it's not saying, you know, you do these 12 things and we will have restaurants everywhere, but it assumes that we're going to continue on the track that we're doing on the development and planning side and transit side and tries to focus on achieving that. So I think it's a good product in that way. The Washington area cluster, I think the, you know, the strategy didn't suggest anything in terms of restaurants, or at least not as explicitly, it was really the focus was exclusively on the farmer's market. And that's an area where, you know, I think we ought to be paying some particular attention. It's the reason that we told everyone in the neighborhood that they should, when they were violently opposed to Metro Place at Washington Square and not quite as violently, but still opposed to Riverside at Washington Square and opposed to the rivers, that we said, look, you know, it's maybe something new and it's change, but doing, bringing these projects to the Broderick and Washington Square neighborhood is going to bring the people that we need to support, you know, the restaurants and coffee houses and stuff that you'd like to have happen. So to me, that's a commitment, that's a commitment we have to fulfill. So it's an area that I want to focus on in particular, as well as the downtown corridor, but creating those sorts of opportunities and the support that we can for restaurants in that area. The relocation issue, I think, is, it's part of this clustering and curb appeal thing and, so I'd definitely be interested in looking at if there are restaurants in town that could be more successful if they were in better or different locations, particularly on this clustering concept, that, you know, things that we might be able to do to facilitate, that seemed to make sense to me. And you're right, you know, if their existing location still has the kitchen and everything else, it might be the place for a new micro enterprise, you know, a new small business to emerge and get incubated that is too small to go into Baker Square or to get the capital for an entirely new facility, but that might be able to make one of these legacy locations work. So I think it's good and what you've tried to distill, given the resource limitations that we have into an action plan, at least as an initial phase, is at least a good start.
Mayor Portman, please.
Yeah, just a few more comments. I'd like to see a little bit more about what we mean about retention for existing restaurants. It, I don't think we've articulated, we've kind of talked a little bit about it, but your overall strategies are, you know, good direction, just as the mayor just said. But I'd like to see, because we don't have a lot of money and some of these things are a couple of years down the road, so we could be planning toward that. But what can we do right now to assist existing restaurants? Maybe a specific list or some actions related to that. The other thing, and, you know, with all due respect, I'm still concerned about the, it seems like to me this report would argue to most chains not to come to West Sacramento because nobody's spending any money that lives here. You know, we're so low in the statewide comparison and I'm not totally sure that I agree with that because I think there are a lot of people that do spend money for restaurants, they just go out of town. And I think we need to find a better way of capturing what's really being spent here and also finding a better way to capture the revenues from the working population that comes to the city every day. I just think if you're doing your due diligence and you want to open up a restaurant, you pull up our report and it says that, you know, people here only spend $234 a year, then you put that to the bottom of the pile. So I think we need to, I mean, I'm not trying to cook the books, but I don't think that's an accurate number of what's really, really spent. So I don't know if there's other measures, but I do think that we should take a look at that piece of the report and expand it.
Well, and I mean, we're not going to go back and rewrite this report, but I mean, I think the framing of it is, I mean, the way for us to be thinking about this really is we're doing the promotion and the marketing based on this report is that we have, you know, that West Sacramentoans have another $1,200 to spend on your restaurants.
Exactly.
If you were to open up here, right, if you open up your hometown buffet, Mr. Lowell will spend an additional $1,200 a year at least in order to make it successful.
Whatever.
But I mean, that's the right framing of this decision because I think you're right. It's, you look at it, you're like, well, and it's not, it's, I mean, it's not an accurate portrayal of what we're spending, it's just what we're spending here and it doesn't account for the employees. But I mean, that's, it's the best measure that you've got. I mean, I understand the reason for it, but as we frame it, that's, it's really that there's this, because our, you know, it's that we have this untapped capacity that's north of $1,000, that's significant.
And then the only other, I would like to see us emphasize more along Third Street. If we're going to offer sewer credits or if we're going to offer, the Harbor area to me is going to do what it's going to do and the market should pretty much drive that. But it's going to be a long time before we can improve the curb appeal in that particular area, in my view. But I think the Third Street area is the area where we could really start getting something, you know, working towards more of a midtown environment because, you know, we're not utilizing our biggest asset, which is the river. So I mean, to the degree that we can, you know, co-locate restaurants in the river area, I think to me, is where we should. If we're going to do any incentives with sewer credits or anything like that, I would like to see that be the area that we try to focus on.
If I may, we will need to offer incentives where we don't have infrastructure. So where, for example, in the Washington area, we have the Firehouse Building that is a potential site, but it needs extensive capital to redevelop that. Where we will need the incentives is where we don't have restaurant fixtures and equipment. In the central business district, we have some spots that are vacant that we can put someone in fairly quickly without extensive capital investment. But in the Washington area, we don't. We don't have, except for one space that I know of that's been on the market for a time. So, yes, for new construction is where we will need to deploy incentives and that's in fact where we don't have the resources now to do that.
Mr. Kristof.
Where are we with the Fatt Group, the Fatt Palm Group? Are they, as a matter of fact, it'd probably be, I'm sorry. It would probably be Third Street, not even Third, it'd probably be Second Street, right on the river.
The redevelopment site?
Right.
There, it's a vacant parcel, so.
No, have they been active at all, I mean, is what I mean.
Not on the world, yeah.
Mr. Berman is going to help you out?
No, they have.
Haven't been active? Okay.
You know, with Tom Fatt's death, the partnership kind of went into a hiatus period.
Okay.
But one of the partners' daughters has been brought in, I think, to provide leadership to the group. We recently toured the Calsters Building with them. They got up on the top floor of the Calsters Building and looked down at their own site and said, what a wonderful opportunity. So we're hopeful that they will re-energize themselves and move forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we do have a couple of requests to speak on item eight, and the first is by Denise Seals on behalf of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce.
And thank you again. In the continuing interest of the chamber's goal, building and creating, helping support a strong local economy, the chamber supports approval of the restaurant retention and attraction strategy. Our board considers it a well-thought-out and realistic strategy that while it may not meet our wildest dreams, it certainly provides an excellent tool for moving forward. It also, in the proposed strategy, continues to develop the city-chamber economic development and business retention partnerships that are consistent with our current partnerships through Project Pride. There are itemized in the strategy, a P-bid for West Cap Corridor, which we're already taking the lead on, farmer's market shop, local business response team and business resource seminars. We also look forward, in fact, the chamber board included part of the program of work outlined in the strategy in their planning retreat for the next year to make it part of our work goal as well. Further partnerships is defined in the strategy. Every day, I hear from restaurants that are having problems, that are here, existing restaurants that have a long commitment to the community and need our support and our resources. There are opportunities for us to begin tomorrow with efforts that are outlined in the strategy that require really very little capital investment to make them happen. We have volunteers from the restaurant industry that have been pioneers and are very well-established and successful that are more than happy to volunteer their time if we bring restaurant owners together to help mentor and encourage and share, you know, ideas and concepts. It's an interesting industry, you know, it's kind of counterintuitive to what you would think of normally of a competition. What they recognize is that more restaurant, successful restaurants where they are brings everyone up and they like the idea of the clustering concept, but what they also recognize is that a restaurant failure is not good for anyone's business because it sends a message to the community that they really, both the immediate community and the greater community, that they really don't want out there. So they're more than willing to work together. And we can make that happen. It's just a matter of getting then the economic development staff's program of work laid out. But we're there, we have the resources to do it, we have the talent in our community to make it happen and we would encourage that you support this because to paraphrase one of the famous elected, if we want a paragaries, we've got to sell out Pooja Grill and Suki Sushi. And that's what'll attract new restaurants to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Lowell?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, again for the record. Boy, I don't know if I can make this in three minutes, but I like that location and phasing approach, but Jefferson Boulevard and Business 80 must, we must restore midday bus service to make that succeed, just as we would have to do so at that Baker Square location, which does not have midday bus service. And again, I still believe we should get an I-5 business route from Jefferson north to West Capital to the end of West Capital to the end of I-5. And I think that would put West Capital back on the map again and that would help out considerably. And that would help locally and attract out-of-towners. And as I mentioned before and as you hinted, us retirees would rather eat a good brunch and then shop. And so you kill two birds with one stone, so to speak. And as I mentioned before, and as you handed, acknowledge, us retirees would rather eat a good brunch and then shop, and so you kill two birds with one stone, so to speak, that way, and, and get, and, uh, put out, put out a, a questionnaire, uh, asking, asking residents what they'd like to see here, you know, that would cause them to do more of their shopping here. And, and we're going to have to somehow or another remodel some of these older restaurants that don't have wheelchair accessibility to their restrooms, so that they do, and therefore comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so, maybe, maybe they could have a common restroom built with some of the nearby businesses that would make it easier on the shoppers that way. So, uh, so even if there's only one patron in a big group that's in a wheelchair, that group's going to pass up that restaurant if it does not have a wheelchair-accessible restroom, so. But on the other side of the river, as far as I'm concerned, there's too many oriental-type, uh, non, non-American-type restaurants, buffet restaurants. And I heard a telephone operator tell me that the new Country Buffet, I think it is over there on the other side of McClellan Air Force Base, caused Hometown Buffet to drop their prices considerably, and so I find that interesting, and I still have a rumor, I'm keeping that in mind, that we'll have one of those two over there near the Walmart pretty soon. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lo, and Helena Fisk. The Small Business Development Center.
Yes, I'm Helena Fisk, I'm a consultant at the Small Business Development Center, and we partnered with the City of West Sacramento and the Chamber of Commerce last year. What we've done is we've brought one of our consultants over here on Thursdays to meet with the business people here at no charge. We don't charge, because we're the consulting side of the Small Business Administration. Having listened to the presentation about the restaurants and how marketing is going to be a very big deal here, we have consultants that can come over, give presentations, do workshops. We also have customer service representative consultant who can go into different restaurants, help them out if they're going to stay in their area. We're here to support the businesses, and we're here to support this restaurant initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the request to speak on the item, so we'll turn to the council for their discussion. And this is a workshop, so there's no action required. If there's no further questions or comments, then that will conclude our work on item eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Council Calendar.
Yes, this evening is the last meeting of the month. We do have two days where the city will be closed, Thursday and Friday, for celebration of Thanksgiving, 26th and 27th, and then on the fourth, there will be a holiday celebration at the Walgreen Parking Lot in lieu of the traditional tree lighting, because we have a major construction project up front. So, that will be on the fourth at five o'clock.
Did you see that thing now? Yeah, I couldn't even come in this side.
That's right, we, we change it every day, just so nobody can find us.
It's going to be done in, in late 2009?
2012.
No, it says 2009 on the sign. All right, any questions on the calendar? City manager reports?
Just one item, we were, we're having our annual executive team workshop this week, starting tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, where we'll be discussing a variety of issues in preparation for the council's workshop in January.
All right, any questions for the city manager report, city attorney report? All right, standing staff direction for members of the council? And we have no future agenda item requests?
No.
Okay. Been moved by Mr., Mayor Portembeere, second by Mr. Kristof, that the meeting be adjourned, and without objection, we're going to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Ray Jones, who was a former mayor of the city, member of the city council, member of the school board, leader in so many ways in the community institution, one of the, I think, the first, the first mayor of our community to have left us. So, it's, it's a significant milestone, and, you know, I certainly, when I first got involved in community activities in the city, Ray was right there pushing me along, you know, smiling and telling me I could do it. And as I got farther into it, he was the one that was saying, he was one of the folks saying, don't get too big for your britches, you shouldn't do so much. And I, I've always personally appreciated Ray's insight and his humor, and, and he's left an indelible mark on, on West Sacramento, and, and most of us were at the service, but it was, it was a really important figure in West Sacramento, and he's going to be greatly missed. All right, so with that, that's the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries unanimously, and tonight's meeting is adjourned in memory of Ray Jones.